This is part of the budget process. There are finance committee meetings scheduled not only this evening, but tomorrow night at 6:00. Tonight, there'll be first at 7:00, an overview by the mayor, followed by a presentation by the library, recreation department, fire department, and police department. Tomorrow evening, commencing at 6:00 PM, not 7:00 PM, the Department of Public Works will present, followed by the school department. City council is here in a fact-finding way. Ultimately, as a result of these meetings, on Monday evening, the 26th, the finance committee will make a recommendation to the city council with respect to three items: communications from the mayor, C-103, which is the budget itself, C-104, which is the water department budget, and C-105, which is the sewer department budget. On Monday night, there'll be a hearing with respect to each one of those communications, where we will take input from the public and ultimately make a decision with respect to the budget. After all of the departments have presented this evening and the city councils have asked their questions from the various departments, I will permit comment from the public. There is a signup sheet on that same table where the agendas are. I will call people from the signup sheet first. If you haven't signed up, you'll still have an opportunity to comment. I will ask people until they comment to preserve an atmosphere of dignity and decorum with respect to this meeting. Everybody will have an opportunity to comment. I, as the chair, will control who is speaking, and when there is someone speaking, no one else in the room will speak. There'll be no disruption permitted in the audience, and everybody will have an opportunity to present their positions and what they want us as city councilors to hear. And I guess we'll start and proceed with the mayor's budget overview.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. So, we're in rapid fire, gonna give a sort of historical look back and then bring you up to the current, but we'll do it pretty quickly. We'll start back in 1994, if you remember. It was sort of the perfect storm. Devens was leaving, was closing and leaving. The mall decided prior to 1993, 1992, decided it wasn't gonna build, and we were sunk into a recession. And so, at the time, the mayor and the Lemmister City Council had some tough decisions to make. It wasn't their fault, it was just, as I said, the economy that really played a major role. So, this is a quick overview. We had negative free cash, $42,000 in free cash and $187,000 in unpaid bills. We had the teacher deferrals, which was, sort of looked good from the surface, but in the end, ended up costing the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. Schools were overcrowded, we had schools built for 600 that had 800 and 900 students in them. There was no plan for infrastructure repairs, no plan for city school building repairs, no stabilization account, junk bond status, could borrow for projects. Pension liability was in the F range at 46% funded, and every department in the city needed equipment. What we decided to do at that point, they were building five, 600 units of housing a year. The outcry from the public was, that wasn't acceptable, we needed to do something about that. We developed a growth management plan, a call for the development of a comprehensive quantitative and qualitative report, which outlines the available school, water, sewer, road and waste disposals and treatment capabilities, and to encourage and stimulate the improvement of existing capabilities through state and federal funds and through linkages with developers. One of the thoughts was, one way to control growth was to buy land, buy some of the developable pieces of property in the city, and that would not only give us open space, good for the environment, but would also control growth. We were the first in the state to develop our open space and recreation plan. It allows us to access millions in state grants, including land around our watershed, shawlen farms, and other important pieces of land across the city to help control growth. We completed a full assessment of our DPW-related infrastructure, above and underground, as well as our waste, water and wastewater facilities. Millions in grants have been obtained to bring our infrastructure ahead of our surrounding communities. Most communities in the state are just beginning their INI removal, that's removing clean water, storm water, from their drain, from their sewer system. We've been done for, I don't know how many years?
Years.
It's been years, and many are out just borrowing for those projects now. We completed a water and sewer rate study to make sure our rates would be, remain low while making improvements to not overwhelm our citizens and taxpayers. Planning started commercial-industrial growth, completed a priority analysis of the land that would be developed for commercial-industrial space if infrastructure was available. We accessed $5 million in state dollars to bring infrastructure to 450 acres of land across the city to expand Lemmister's tax base. And we planned for our students. We did a school space needs study. It was developed and completed in 1997 to begin to develop a plan to address overcrowding. And if those that were here at the time, serving on either the school committee or the city council, remember, the thought was, we had these schools that were, John, is it Council Dombrowski? Oh, you got one? Okay. The thought was, if we built just an elementary school at the time, then once that large group, that large enrollment number moved up to the next level, which was the middle school, then we'd have overcrowding at the middle school. So, what we did is, we built and planned accordingly. So, we started off with Sammaset, that was a middle school, I'm sorry, elementary school, K through 8, and then we built Skyview, which again, middle school, that handled the, that extra enrollment that we had, that surge, and then later on, as planned, we did the high school project. It showed enrollment increased by about 12%, 643 students between 1993 and 1997. The projected enrollment from the space needs study for K through 8 in 2015 ranged from 4,476 to about 4,652. The projected enrollment for 9 through 12 in 2015 ranged from 1916 to 1993, meaning the total projected enrollment for Lemmister in 2015 was 6,392, 6,645, or an increase of about 23%. As of 2017, we were at about 6,000. So, we, the projected numbers, again, growth management plan worked. The projected numbers, actual numbers were actually several hundred, well, several hundred less than what was predicted. Building and renovating schools to address overcrowding. Here are some of the numbers here. Again, we applied for state funding. There's the state grant, that's with the city invested. That's Sammaset, then Skyview. The other unique thing that we've done that I don't think most other communities have done is, we borrowed for 10 years, and just like anything else, if you borrow for 10 years versus 20 or 30 in your mortgage for your home, obviously the payoff is quicker, but it cost you less. And it frees up debt faster, so that when we were done Sammaset, we could move on to Skyview, and then from Skyview to the high school. So, you can see the city's investment, the state's investment. City investment since 2012. We did the Drake Roof and Boiler. Again, you can see the numbers, and then with the Fallbrook, so we're at 2.4. Lemmister High School, I just wanna explain that. So, originally, what happened is the state changed the way they did business. So, they no longer were just letting people run their buildings down and then coming in and saying, "It's not worth renovating the building, therefore we want 20, 30, 40 million dollars to build a new school." In fact, in a lot of cases, it was much more than that. So, what they did is, they developed a team of, school building assistance program, developed a team of architecture engineers and mechanical people that would go out and assess a building. And they would determine whether the building needed improvements, a building needed expansions, or if a building needed to be demolished and then, and build a new one. And so, they came out to Lemmister, we were one of the first visits, and they actually went out to every city and town and looked at every school building as part of the process. They went to, they went to the high school and they came back and recommended that we get improvements in the area of about 12 to 14 million dollars. So, they wanted to replace mechanical sorts of things. So, hot water tanks and some windows and heating systems, and some upgrade to electrical, and I think they were gonna do the roofs. At the time, myself and Nadine Benkley met with the school building assistance program and convinced them, we persuaded them and made our case, and their finding came back to us and let us know that they would do a complete renovation to the building and an expansion to the school at a tune of 43,000, 43 million, almost 44 million dollars. Total cost of the projects, Lemmister High School, the Drake School, Fallbrook School, Boiler, was about 47 million dollars. State grants were about 31 million, and we did something else unique here, John. You wanna just sort of explain that, $5 million, 5.3 million?
It was just, you know, when one debt runs out, you can accumulate cash, and so we were able to pay with cash, a big part of the bill.
Right.
52 and 5.3 million.
So, that's money that we put up front, and then there were also a few things that were not covered under the reimbursement.
And it's not covered under net school spending.
Net school spending, and it wasn't covered under the net reimbursement, so we also funded those areas as well. If you look at the amounts financed by all three, the debt service on all three, now, there are a couple more projects that are coming up. So, right now, we're, our debt service is about 1.6, but it's gonna change to almost 2 million. So, again, at the time, school committee, city council, conversation was, A, we needed to build schools, we need to eliminate the overcrowding. That was the highest priority in the city, that came from the citizens, came from everywhere. That was really a high priority. Second priority is to follow the student through the overcrowding, so elementary, middle, and then high school. And it was known at the time, we had many discussions, because net, ed reform started in about 1993, 1994, when all of this started. And our discussion centered around the fact that we need to set a priority, small class sizes, new buildings, better paid teachers, more money spent in the classroom. But again, there was a priority at the time. It was well-known and discussed at the time within the community that we wouldn't be able to spend as much as we would like to in the classroom, because we were following through on this long-term project. And then after the schools were built, then we started some of the major improvements to all of the schools in the city by doing heating systems and roofs and windows, and again, it's a great program, and you get reimbursed, but you still have to do, pay the debt service. So, our debt service, after we get through all of these school projects, will be about 2 million a year. That does not count towards, you know, what everyone talks about net school spending. Is it school-related or education-related? Projects not financed yet, we'll go to this slide. So, these are projects that will begin and will use free cash to minimize some of the costs upfront, so what we'll do is temporary borrowing internally. We'll use free cash to pay down some of those till we go to permanent borrowing. Northwest School renovation is about 3.25. Johnny Appleseed renovation is about 3.9 million. And again, additional debt service is about 325,000. So, we've gotta start to plan out the fact that we're gonna have to start spending about 2 million a year to fund all of these projects collectively, whatever isn't paid off. And again, this is no cost to the school department, that includes the designs and plans for all of the projects. We'll get to some of the fiscal areas. Lemmister in 2017, we have $14 million in our stabilization account, over $60 million spent on two new schools and renovations to almost every other with no cost to the school budget. We have a B rating for our pension systems, funded at 85%. Annual free cash of between 7 and 9 million to pay cash for capital improvement, saving the taxpayers millions. So, a lot of communities, what they do is, they put in their budget, their capital improvements, and then they have to, then they have, you'll have to keep a budgeted amount in your budget every year for those capital improvements. So, if you go out and bond, you know, 50 million dollars worth of projects, then that amount is carried in there. So, in other words, fire trucks, police cruisers, we haven't borrowed for any of that. That's what we use our free cash for. You're here, you make the appropriations, you know exactly where that money goes. At the close of every year, water, sewer money gets closed out and goes back, but that's exactly where we, all of the capital improvements for the city, that's where all that money comes from. The radio systems that we've done, if you remember, that came from free cash. We're gonna spend several hundred thousand dollars building a radio frequency and a communication system for the school department. Again, that is with free cash. Residential growth slowed through targeted land purchases. 450 acres of infrastructure ready, so we have commercial-industrial property in the city. If you look at a map, which I'll show you at the next meeting, you'll see that there's very little land left, left because of our growth management plan for residential development. I didn't say there's none, but there's very little, and Bill is the assessor, and again, the map is upstairs if you wanna see it tonight, but if not, it was, the plan was to show you at another meeting. But, we have 450 acres of infrastructure ready, meaning, a lot of, a lot of the times that we showed people our industrial, commercial land, all we could do is show it to them that it didn't have any infrastructure. Now, it's all, it's all shovel-ready. All our infrastructure is in place on all 450 acres, which is future tax revenue for the city. We have a capital improvement plan for all departments within the city, and that is one of the things that Department of Revenue and a number of different agencies have referred people to our city for best practices, for things like our ITTF, which is our technology group within the city, our finance group, which you see here, which is composed by the city comptroller, John Richard, David LaPlante is our treasurer-collector, and Bill Mitchell, who is our chief assessor for the city. So, long ago, most communities didn't have a finance team or a technology group or a energy group. These are the sorts of things that not only DOR, but other agencies and state, federal government refer those people to us, so that we can help them along in terms of best practices. So, we share best practices. Also wanna note, Bill, you wanna talk a little bit about, well, I took you away from some of the courses you were teaching, and then also, David, about some of the things that you do in your fields.
Sure. I am the chairman of the Education for the Mass Association of Assessing Officers, so I was at the Cape this morning teaching a course regarding eminent domain takings to teach other assessors across the state some of the best practices, and it's a week-long conference going on down there now. There's some other courses that will prepare them for appellate tax board cases against some of the larger commercial entities that plague us with filings each year, such as Walmarts, CVSs, and things like that, where some of the people have small offices and they need aid or assistance in learning how to deal with those. So, I'm involved heavily with that association. It helps me keep on top of things, it helps me make sure that I have the latest in the legislation that's being proposed for any of the solar projects that we've dealt with, of course, and things like that. So, I'm heavily involved, and it's good for us, because it helps us kind of get ahead of the curve on things. And I know David's very heavily involved with the Mass Treasurer and Collectors Association, and it's very similar to what he does.
Just real quick, I hate, no more blowing my horn here, but I've been doing this job for 26 years, and I've loved every minute of it, and one of the requirements with the job was that I become a certified treasurer-collector, and that's a three years for each one of those, going through the different courses yearly. And as long as I go every year and maintain, I maintain my certifications, which I do every year. But, on top of that, I, they also tacked me on the education committee for many years, been there, done that, I'm done with that. I don't have time. But, it's a good thing, and you learn a lot. And the other piece is, I teach three classes out at the school for treasures who want, new treasures and new collectors who wanna learn how to do tax takings, land or low-value takings. They, you know, we develop these courses over the years, and then we just, you know, bring in the new treasures, and they learn these, and they're required, they're part of the training, you need to be certified. So, I do treasure, I do two treasurer's course, one treasurer's course and two collector's courses over that term. Municipal lien certificates and how to make the forms to do the taking as the collector, and then once you got those, as treasurer, 'cause I'm both, how to go ahead and then actually get it paid off or foreclosed on, so the city can move forward. So, that's briefly what I do.
John? Well, I've been with the city for 36 years. I was here with Prop 2 and 1/2 implementation, saw the ramifications of that. Had to go through a number of recessions, the early 90s, being a particularly harsh one, and that's probably where David and I learned, you know, the right steps to take and to maintain, to implement policy that will maintain the city's strength through all phases of an economic cycle. Sometimes the decisions are very difficult, but they're relatively easy at the end of the day, meaning that it's, many times it comes down to basic managerial practices. And luckily, we have years and years have, you know, talked to you about what, what our end goals are, and why it makes sense, and they're very well-known, they're very well-followed. But sometimes, when you try to execute policy, it's when real people are involved, it makes it a little bit, it makes it more difficult. But with the, you know, we happen to have here a very experienced team that has been through these issues before. I happen to be, you know, I'm a graduate of a master's degree from Suffolk, so I know a lot of town managers and a lot of people in the, in the business, and not that it's ever easy, but I think if, as we have, set up the guidelines in how we conduct ourselves during the good times, as well as the bad times, you're gonna make it through okay. And I really, you know, I believe the city of Lemmister will do that again through this. And so, we hope to talk to you about it, and even the specifics.
Okay. Okay, and let's look at the bond rating, this is where we've been, what does the bond rating mean? Well, I guess the best analogy is, if you've gone in to purchase a car lately, or an automobile, or bought, you know, a recreational vehicle or something, you'll see something that'll say, you know, interest rates as low as 2% or whatever it might be, but when you go in to fill out the application, the first thing you wanna do is run your credit application. Well, it's your credit application that will decide ultimately what you will pay for interest, if they'll loan you money at all. So, it's really a look at, what is your risk? And the bond rating is pretty much the same thing. So, again, bad economic times, no blame to the people that were here, not their fault, they can't control the national economy, but we did hit a recession in 1990 that affected real estate and business alike. We got a downgrade from A to AA. We've got another downgrade from B double A1 from AA, and then they held that credit rating on us until we, again, made some drastic changes in terms of policy in the city, and that gave confidence to, if you remember, we started a stabilization account. We became less, and we became less reliant on using our one-time funding for fixed costs, all of those things, and there were a number of different areas that got us to increase our bond rating, and so now, if you look at through 2012, I don't know if you meant to put 2017, but...
That was the last upgrade.
Okay, so the last upgrade is AA2 rating, and that's number three in the county. And the only communities to beat us are like Southborough and Northborough, I think, and they're much more, they're much more richer towns in those areas. But, in all of West County, we're number three in terms of our bond rating, which means we follow the guidance of GASB and follow the policies that are best practices and the policies of good fiscal management in the city. Get into the budget now, the nitty-gritty. General fund appropriations of 120, 869, 650,000 dollars. So, we're 120 million, 869, 650. So, those are our total appropriations. Where's the breakdown? You see the water fund appropriations and the sewer fund appropriations. Again, as you know, each year is not a separate enterprise fund in the city, so collections that come in after a certain time of the fiscal year will be closed out and returned in free cash. So, some of the money that you see in free cash, people say, "Well, jeez, you have all that money in free cash." A bulk of that, or a good deal of it, goes back to the, goes back to the stabilization account. Budget represents a 3.16% increase, 3.16% increase. Water department increases about 40,000, sewer departments is about 124,500. I won't go through every single one of these.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
How did you come up with the projections for the water and sewer increase?
We can only spend...
Are you increasing the rates down here, or is that the existing use?
Well, remember, we can only spend, remember, we have a receipts account. So, we can only spend...
And I do believe there was a rate increase.
Right, that one of the raises went in, but we can, in the receipts account, you can only spend what you spent the previous year, what you took in the previous year. So, there's no enterprise fund, or that money would just sit there, but you're limited as to what you can spend in a water budget or sewer budget. It's a receipts account, that's, you can have one or the other. Again, we show you from 2014, fiscal 2014, to fiscal 2018 in each of the different areas. So, for instance, 2017's budget for, say, Public Works was around 5 million, they went to about 5,145,000 dollars. So, again, most of these are very incremental, cultural recreation, debt service, again, that's, you know, that's what occurring for debt service. Most of that, again, education, schools. Let's go to the next slide. Highlights. Levy ceiling is 71 million, property 2 and 1/2, tax levy increase will bring us about 1.8 million, and I'm just rounding these all off here. Some of the highlights, salary and wages reflects all union and non-union personnel. One of the things that we've done, and this comes from my, I think John talked about his 36 years here in experience, and David's, and one of the things that we tried to do when we got here is, one of the things that happened to the city is, every, the city would hire, and then a recession would come, bad economy, and then we'd lay people off, and then we'd hire everybody back, and then there'd be a recession and a bad economy, and we'd lay them all off again. And what we found is, there is, that's just not a good way, that's not building sustainable budgets. So, in the city side of the budget, what we decided to do is, we wouldn't hire people. What we'd do to fill in is, we would use overtime, if needed, in certain situations. We would find other ways to do business. Some places, we outsourced. We're really good at doing water lines, we do water lines better than private construction companies. We do it well. We do water lines. We don't, we're, we're more expensive doing it ourselves, doing sewer lines, so in a lot of cases, we don't. So, we went through item by item, service by service, and decided how to build a sustainable budget, so that we're not, we're not sort of reflective of a good economy or a bad economy. And again, you lay people off, you hire people. So, all in all, I will give you the data a little in here. We've done some halftime positions in the clerk's office, as you know, we were five and then we had to cut back, but we went to halftime, now we're back to full time. Other than that, actually in the planning department, you'll see later, if she comes before you, we went from having, you know, five people in the department to having, you know, two. So, in most cases, many departments have been scaled down, or they remain the same, and that's pretty consistent in the, in the budget. Go to the next slide. Public safety overtime increases to reflect wage settlements. So, in other words, if the overtime cost went up because their wages went up. And again, by not hiring people has saved us in terms of benefits, benefit package. We hire replacements when people do leave in departments, we do, not, there are times we don't, but in most cases, in police and fire, we do, in DPW, we do hire replacements. So, the money that is basically saved in, in... So the money that is basically saved in, by not hiring full-time employees, having paid benefits, is basically what funds their raises, city employees. There are no new positions in terms of the public safety end, there, no, I'm sorry, new positions. There are two, in the budget, we've put in for two patrolman positions funded with police department budget. We had to cut back some time ago, and we are in desperate need. We are trying to hire 11 officers right now in the academy. We can't even find enough academies to get our officers in. But with the increasing issue of things like domestic violence and those sorts of things, we have not added anybody to the traffic department. And this year, we're gonna be adding two more. That may sound like not a big deal for us, though, and Chief will certainly be here this evening. Two is like 10 for us, if we can get two more people. That increases the number of patrolmen to 60. Other increases, our health and garbage disposal, our solid waste pickup will go up by $70,000, all by contract. Highway labor, $55,000, and highway expenses, $41,500. Group insurance appropriations for active employees increased by $265,000. And again, the more people you hire, the more benefits there are to pay, not only in group health, but in terms of sick time, in terms of other things like personal days, and then later on, when somebody retires. And as you know, if you work for the city or the school department and you retire after 10 years, the city is obligated to pay your insurance for the rest of your life and your spouse's life. And we are obligated to pay a pension. So by not hiring employees, we can keep this, these costs down. Operating budget expenses for education, there's the chapter 70. Chapter 70 this year is $122,000, $122,460,000. So that's the total amount. Now, let me sort of highlight that by saying that the budget is not complete yet. We have not passed the budget. Similar to last year, they didn't pass the budget, but we got, I think, $500 or $550,000 extra when they did pass it. So they went from 70 to 75, John, per pupil, extra.
Yeah.
So they changed that. I'm not sure what they're gonna do this year.
They changed the dynamics, there's a lot more involved.
Right. So they changed kind of how they did that. But anyway, there was additional funds that we got, but we didn't get them, we didn't get them until later, if you remember right. We came down here with a budget, talked about net school spending and the required amount. We passed that, we met that, and then the formula changed, and we came down and reappropriated that money. So total amount required, this is the required amount that the state puts in place, is $122,460 from the state, and the local required contribution is about $326,000. I'm just rounding that off, for a total amount of about $450,000. So that's what the state is saying, based on the formula, is saying, that that is the required amount that the schools will get this year. Now, how did that come about? Well, there are a number of different areas. One is that the enrollment is down by almost 100 students. If you look back in time, there was students that were coming in, living in the hotels. They are no longer there. Some are, but most are gone. We did pick up revenue from that, that is gone. So all in all, looking at the foundation budget, which we can debate all night, is about 25, 26 years old and needs to be updated. But in any event, that is the required amount. Transportation, we increased it by $100,351. But again, the school department is meeting July 10th and needs to put together a better plan and scope and budget, and they're gonna be returning back with us, so we'll be down here changing those numbers. So that will be sort of a number that we put aside for now. But what we took out of the general budget is another $100,000 to put into transportation. But again, that number will be, that number will be readdressed once we get that final number. And it's also a company looking at how we can be more efficient with our bus stops and our whole transportation system. Last year, we spent almost $5 million in transportation. It has gone up substantially. And again, that does not count towards, it is education-related, but not count towards net school spending number. And again, there's our debt service at 1.6. Again, we'll be adding on soon to that, so it'll be close to 2 million.
I have a question.
Yes.
The numbers, okay, so the $71,816 million net school spending number in the slide is different than the $70 million in the budget book, by about 1.7 million. So what accounts for that difference?
Those two numbers have nothing to do with each other.
They're both called net school spending requirement, so why are they so different?
No, okay.
Net school spending requirement on the slide, John.
Yeah, remember, I showed you the two pages.
Yeah, yeah.
In the 2018 budget number.
Right. That's not, that includes school transportation.
The $71 million?
No, the other one.
It's less, by 1.7 million.
Right.
So you took transportation out of...
No, no, education, the education budget.
Right.
What you see in that slide is what is directly going towards the schools.
Why then, in this cover sheet of the budget that we just got, is the education number a million seven less? It's $70,097,910.
Because that is what the school department is getting directly. That's, if you go to the actual budget, all right, the four-page summary budget, statutory budget?
Yep.
You'll see that that is the total. What you don't see in the statutory budget are what some people refer to, and it's not, they're not voted on, are the indirects. Like, the city has nothing to do as part of the indirect total. The city has no control, has nothing to do with the charter school tuitions and school choice tuitions. That's a function that appears on the cherry sheet once the state budget is passed. So those assessments are not included in the direct appropriation towards the school department. Now, the other few items that are left, that are indirects, that are really as a matter of convenience, do appear throughout the budget, but not in the school department's budget. For instance, and we've mentioned this a number of times, the city retirement contribution.
You talking about chargebacks?
Yeah, the chargebacks. They are, all the, what I'm saying is all the other chargebacks appear in the budget, but in other departments' areas. For instance, as I was going to say, one of the areas is the retirement charge, which is approximately the retirement contribution from the city to the, the city's contribution to the retirement fund is slightly over $8 million.
For the whole city?
For the whole city.
Right.
So since 1993, and in documents provided, and, by the way, those chargebacks are audited every year. But the general formula is, is a very simple formula. It's, you take the salary and wages from the school department. You add those up, and then you take the salary and wages from all the other city departments. You get the total salary and wages. So you divide the school wages into the city, which right now is approximately 32%. So then you would take the 32% times the 8 million to get the school charge. So that's just one, that has to be paid July 1st. It's a very expensive loan if you don't.
Right.
And also, the other insurance is property liability, everything else, which we have a professional firm that does the insurance. You know, we're conduits for information. They break it up and say how much is school-related, how much is city-related, and that's paid July 1st, because we have to be insured July 1st. So, and then there's some administrative, you know, but, so those indirect costs don't appear in the direct appropriation to the city. Okay? So you're not, you know...
But you charge them back.
We don't charge them, yeah, they're...
They're taken out of the net school spending number.
They count towards net school spending by law.
Right.
Using the lawful method of charging. And actually, in most, in most cases, you would find that the city is way under. Like, there are two options for general administration.
Right.
And the city by far, on the administration, charges hundreds of thousands of dollars less than the per pupil statewide average method that is allowed.
Right, right, right. No, I understand that. I think a couple of years ago, the city did actually ask DOR about going to that other method, and the state said no.
No, we never have.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, it's posted on the chapter 70. We illustrated it, but we never asked to go there.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that I understand this, because I still, I understand what you're talking about, chargebacks. I understand all of the various line items that are in that.
Yep.
The calculation that you just explained about the insurance, that's helpful. But what I need is an itemized listing of what is the difference between the $71,816 on that slide, which includes charter school tuitions and school choice money, and the $70 million, 097910, that's in our budget.
Sure, okay. But if you just look, if you look at your budget...
Yep.
You'll see it. I mean, you know, you just gotta take the time to look at your, because the direct appropriation includes, so you would take...
The direct appropriation is the $70 million that's in the book.
Include school transportation, include school transportation. So you back the transportation out, and then that's what's left on the salary and wages and expenses, that's net school spending eligible. Those two line items are net school spending eligible. So whatever those two come up to, and the other book had it...
It's on page three, I think. 66,721,910.
Yep, right.
Where are you?
Page three of the budget.
Okay.
It's titled operating budget expenses. You got that?
Yep. That's the way they require it. We're not, that's not our system, that's the way they require it.
Yep, 66,721,910.
Hang on.
Page three, right from the beginning.
I'm looking at line item 1416, is that what you're looking at, Mark?
Go to the budget book.
I have the budget book.
Excuse me, it's right, it's right there.
No, I want to make sure that these, I'm trying to, I'm trying to match that to what we have in the budget book, and I'm not able to do that yet.
If you go to page three in the budget book.
Yep.
It's titled operating budget expenses.
You talking about before the line item budget?
No, no, from the very beginning of the budget book, page three.
Right, one, two.
It's actually the fourth page, I think.
Okay.
See, operating budget expenses?
That's what I just asked. Okay, operating budget expenses, right.
So you, if you look about halfway down, or a third of the way down the page, you'll see, I'm hiding, direct appropriations to the school department.
Yep.
So the city's direct appropriations is 66,721,910.
Right.
All right. The net school spending figure, you'll see up above, is $71,816,847.
Right.
The difference between those two figures is what John was talking about.
Which is transportation and...
No.
The school choice and charter school tuitions, which are part of the cherry sheet, and then all those other chargebacks that John was referring to.
And it will be, actually go over that number. But those numbers, remember, are in flux, won't be known until a state budget is passed. And then other items may even be a little longer, because we don't get insurance breakdowns till September or October. You know, but we certainly are going to meet net school spending with this budget. The mayor appropriated money that is in excess of it.
It's just confusing, because the numbers don't match.
Well, they're not, they're not, they do match, they, yeah, they're not, it isn't what, you know, there's, they're different stories. You know, you don't put, I couldn't put, you know, you can't put the full net school spending number in the school budget, because you're not appropriating it. You're only appropriating certain parts of it.
You appropriate the school choice money.
So council, the $70 million figure, if I'm not mistaken, John?
Yep.
Is the direct appropriations plus the transportation.
And crossing guards, right. So it includes 66,721,910, which is the net school spending, salary and expenses.
Right.
Then you add in 3.3 million for transportation and 41,000 for crossing guards.
Correct.
And that comes up with the $70,000 that's in...
70 million.
Our, 70 million.
Yep.
Thank you.
Correct.
That's in our budget book.
Yep.
It does not...
That's part of the 120 million you're voting on.
Okay.
And then if you go to that page three, it's broken down a different way.
There's separate communications, there's separate tools for communicating.
Where the transportation is decked out of it, because it's not part of, it's not eligible, obviously, right? Does that help?
Yeah, it does for the moment, thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Mayor, I guess we can continue?
Yes, no, so that takes care of that. And then we go into, you know, school transportation and crossing guards. I wanted to note, I wrote myself a little note here, in terms of the bond rating, and I think we know this, but a good way to sort of communicate during the budget processes, when we have a better bond rating, it costs us obviously less money to borrow, right? So we get the better interest rate to borrow. And I also, in our last review by auditors and also the Moody's, we have a very low debt ceiling, so our debt is still carried low. And as you remember, one of the things is in 2018, our ultimate goal for both myself and the city council has been to build that police station, remember? And we had great discussion about whether or not we would renovate or build another one. Well, 2018 is this budget, so coming up, we'll be moving forward with that process. That is gonna require us to borrow again, and we'll be relieving some debt from the library, we'll be paying that off. Again, that 10 years goes by real quick, and that's really advantageous, because it keeps our costs down, and we'll be borrowing again with good rates for 10 years. But we will be addressing that in next year's budget. So that's something to sort of put aside, because we are gonna have to appropriate some revenue for that. The big issues that we see in terms of the school budget, sort of the budget busters, so to speak, transportation, the difference between what was in last year's budget passed and this year is 2 million. The salary and step increases at the, in the school department for wages across the board is 2 million. There are underfunded line items in the school budget from last year that were not put in the, their budget, so that, they were underfunded by about $700,000, things that we just missed. Again, the school department will work real hard to make up at the end of the year here in the last six months, to try to make up from other accounts to balance that out. We lost 100 students, and let's just use as an example, because each student brings with them a certain amount of reimbursement, it could fluctuate, but let's use $10,000. So 100 students, add that up, quite sizable. And then, again, if you look at the chapter 70 increase, that is significantly less. So that is pretty much the budget busters for the school department. Those are the things that are driving up their cost in their budget. Maximizing our resources, we continue to fund the grant administrator's position, leveraging millions in state and federal grants, programs, capital improvement. We continue to fund the small business coordinator and economic developer to help maintain and grow our tax base, and we are, we are about full in the downtown. We'll talk about that in next meeting. We have a whole presentation to sort of share on economic development and our status in terms of low vacancy rate in industrial buildings and also in retail. Launched our new CCLIX fixed program, and we'll soon have our new open checkbook system up and running for greater efficiency, transparency. So every check, the city writes, whether it's school department, police, fires, mayor's office, every check, check will appear on our website.
When is that gonna happen? I know there was a lot of fanfare when that was written.
I'm working on that.
Okay.
And, sorry, me and Copa, I'm busy right now, so I told them to contact me after July. We're about two-thirds of the way through it. We're gonna get the accounts to match up with what they draw out of unison, it'll be an automated thing, so it'll be hands-off, which is the best thing.
That's pretty good a service.
And we already got the service that we have, you know, we're really doing well with it. It's just I had to tell them, put it on hold. We're, we're busy right now.
Okay.
So we'll start it back up in July. So it should be soon. It should be soon.
And that's just the city side, right?
No, it's all checks, everybody.
It's everybody? It's going to be everybody, including the school department?
Any check that the city writes.
Any check considered.
Reimbursement, somebody turns in a reimbursement for a toll, you'll be able to see it.
Good.
Whatever, anybody.
Does that include revolving accounts, too? Any money going in and any money going out of the revolving accounts? I mean, what accounts will be included?
It's going to be just what checks are written.
Any checks are written.
What checks are written, oh.
Your checkbook. Thing is, your, your checkbook is going to be online.
Right.
That's what it's going to be.
So that'll be up and running.
How else would dispersments be made if not by check?
Wires, but those will be in there, too.
Okay.
It's either an EFT, a wire, or a, a physical check, but it's the same thing. It's a dispersment.
Okay, so there shouldn't be anything that is not
No.
on the website, right? Anything that would fall through the cracks.
Right. That's what we're looking for.
Good.
CCLIX Fix is a program where if you see a deficiency or, um, you know, pothole or sidewalk crack or something, you take a picture of it, you send it in. We electronically let you know that we got it. Um, we assign that, goes in, gets taken care of. We respond back with a certain amount of time, letting you know the problem's been taken care of. It's been greatly, uh, a great success and helpful to us. And we were able to track these things and then look at them weekly and monitor them by month and see what our, um, completion rate is. It's really been a great tool for us. Let's see. What was the other one that we did? Oh, you want to talk a little bit about how we changed the assessors' website? That's been, really received well.
Yep. So, um, we had, uh, if, if people haven't noticed, the, the assessors' webpage has changed a little bit. When you go to the GIS mapping, we had an internal education seminar on that. Um, what was happening is we were running again into a, um, a software issue where the old GIS website wasn't, um, accessible by Google Chrome, you know, Internet Explorer. And I, I'm sure a lot of people here had Microsoft Silverlight issues that were popping up when you tried to access the website. So we had, we were dealing with all those issues, and we certainly wiped the slate clean. Time Bomb went to a new platform that allowed us to, a new GIS system. It's much more, um, uh, it's, it's, it's faster, it's a, it's a better platform, so it allows things to come up a lot quicker, so there's not a lot of hesitation. And it allows us to put, uh, all of our, uh, technical data on there, if you look in there. And we'll have a training session. Kristen and I are look, uh, working on that, hopefully, in the next month or two, because we had to get the July first tax bills out and things like that. Uh, so, we're going to be holding the, uh, a training session soon, uh, probably at the library for the public, so, uh, people can come in, real estate agents, appraisers that use it all the time, or engineers and, and taxpayers, so we can, uh, certainly guide them through it and get them more familiarized, because it is a powerful tool and there's a lot of our information on that, uh, system. So, we did upgrade that at no cost to us. Uh, I think it was five-hundred dollars, a one-time fee. We negotiated that through using the same company and, uh, uh, holding them hostage, kind of, you know, so. It worked out well for us, so.
We'll go to, uh, and those are just a couple of initiatives that we've been, um, using. Uh, we'll go to the, um, next page, which is, uh, some of the projects in the city that are grant-funded, that are underway. Um, we just started last week on Summer Street. Uh, there'll be sidewalks, infrastructure repairs, uh, from Summer Street all the way down to, uh, across, it'll start on Main Street, actually, then through Summer Street, cut up to Water Street and down Mechanic Street. And, uh, so what we'll do is, we'll be finishing off that area around Mechanic Street that everybody says is almost as bad as Merrimahv. That street will be fixed. And sidewalks, so that'll complete, um, that'll complete Mechanic Street. Either way, that was a two-point-five-million-dollar downtown infrastructure project that, um, you needed to, um, get some private partners involved. Uh, it's not just a grant you can use anywhere in the city. It is a competitive grant, um, that, uh, comes from the state. And our server upgrade at City Hall, these, um, go, real quick? Sixty-three million.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, we just received a, a grant through Mass IT that allowed us to, um, they gave us sixty-three thousand. A thousand, not a million. Sixty-three million, I'd be jumping for joy. No, it was sixty-three-thousand-dollar appropriation to upgrade, uh, servers at, uh, City Hall and, and Public Safety. So, um, we've been working on that for three years now. We have thirty-four servers in the city. And, uh, we, we've, we've come to a point where all of them are about five or seven years old. So it's, uh, the, the typical lifespan is five to seven, so we're really pushing the envelope with a lot of them. We've had some Band-Aid fixes we've had to do. Uh, some of the switches failed on us, some of the battery backups, and it's coming to a point now where we got to get this done. So, as you know, we recently did a request for proposal for an IT, uh, provider, so that just closed out. We're going to be deciding on a new vendor to come into the city with that. Um, yeah, and then we also hired a, uh, well, we contracted a part-time IT coordinator to help us out, because of the IT committee, or, uh, people consisted of myself, David, uh, Susan from the library, and, uh, some other department heads, and it has just become overwhelming for us to deal with all of the fix issues and, and things that we have to do. So, we're able to hire someone, I think it's, uh, fifteen hours a week. He comes in Tuesdays and Thursdays and, um, has set up a help desk, um, ticketing system for some of our internal employees, so we can, uh, keep on top of the fixes and keep on top of our hardware, so we can, uh, start the project of replacing those servers. And I think we're looking at, um, more virtualization, so we have backup redundancy and security in place, so. Those are some of the other things we're working on.
And let me just, uh, give a little pat on the back for all of these who worked on the ITTF, because for twenty years, they've been the backbone of this system, and it's a huge, huge system. Nobody gets paid extra. Um, this year, finally, I promised them, after many years of saying no, that we just didn't have the funds to do it, uh, last year, that we could put a little bit amount of money so they could hire somebody to help them out. So each, each of them would have to stop whatever they're doing, to go back and try to troubleshoot a problem, or help somebody hook a, uh, you know, cordless, wireless keyboard up, and just a number of problems. Somebody gets a virus within the computer system, and they've done it all, and they've done a great job. And saved us hundreds, if not millions, of dollars in, in the process. Our new pocket, Mechanic Street, Laurel Street, Menus Knock Brook, uh, Walkway Phase Two, complete streets, infrastructure improvements. Wendy, you want to just talk on that real quickly? This has a major effect on all streets in the city, not just one particular neighborhood of downtown?
So last year, the city came up with, um, the, the state came up with this new, uh, complete streets program, which allowed us to access fifty-thousand dollars in technical funds, uh, to hire a consultant to basically put a priority list in, um, in place for the entire city. That includes sidewalks, any, any ADA accessible, accessibility issues, upgrades to streets. So we have it now, an entire guide for the street, for the, for the city, for every street. Uh, and then, we were able to apply this year for, uh, four-hundred-thousand dollars, which we should hear if we got it, um, in a couple of weeks. But it, it'll, hopefully, if we, if we planned out right, it'll give us about four-hundred-thousand dollars every year. We're splitting those, those funds between, uh, school projects and city projects. So like this year, for example, if we get the funds, it'll be to upgrade the area around the senior center in front of City Hall, some accessibility issues there. And it will concentrate around the area of Northwest School. And then, uh, in future years, we'll concentrate on, um, like, Viscaloid Ave around, um, around that school. Uh, so hopefully, we'll get the four-hundred-thousand dollars a year.
Open Checkbook Project, the Open Addiction Counselor Grant. Um, we're going to have a person, uh, more likely working out of the police department. That will be a opiate addiction counselor. Um, a number of, a, a great deal of the calls that we're dealing with at the police department right now are, are drug-related. And, um, this is, uh, we've been working with other agencies to, to assist us. But this is something, uh, somebody that will work right within the police department is very badly needed, and, uh, we're going to make good use of this, um, this grant. Uh, Doyle Field, Upper Field Improvements, uh, Green Communities LED Upgrade, uh, Program. Wendy, you want to talk a little bit about that? I know that's, um, somebody else's area, but.
Yeah. So we've got a, a ton of lighting projects actually going on between several grants in the city. Um, Green Communities have been a great program for us. We've, um, upgraded a lot of, we spent about seventy-five percent of the first Green Communities Act on, uh, communities program on the schools, uh, to do building assessments and upgrade some of their, um, some of their, um, everything from refrigeration to lighting. Uh, so now, we're concentrating on lighting. And, John, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about, that was a huge bonding issue, um, with, with all the lights that we're replacing. But we're going to be replacing the lights downtown, streetlights. Uh, streetlights downtown. Um, it's, it's a combination of the Mass Works Grant and, and, and the Green Communities Act to put LED lights in. And, you know, for, everything from new poles to, to lighting across the city.
Most cities, uh, at the beginning of the process, switching over LED, it wasn't economically feasible to, and, and the equipment wasn't efficient enough to be able to buy the system, so most communities leased. Um, we waited a little longer for the technology to get better and improve, become more efficient, more reliable. And, um, as you know, we ended up buying the system. So we now own the system. The heads will last hundreds of thousands of hours. It's very easy to, to replace. Um, if somebody calls us and tells us that the lights in front of their house are too strong, we can electronically, um, through our, um, iPhone, adjust, or from the police station or the fire station, we can actually adjust the lighting in front of your house, up or down, depending on what's going on. If, um, we have a particular, um, situation that the police department is, uh, looking for somebody, uh, somebody with Alzheimer's or a small child, uh, is missing, we can, uh, turn up the lights in a particular neighborhood. Uh, it's pretty neat, but we're going to actually own the system. We're going to, uh, actually own a lot of the posts. You'll see the, uh, lighting downtown. We'll be taking those aluminum lighting posts out, replacing them with new ones. And the payback on them, John, is.
We're hoping like three years.
Yeah, which has changed the dynamics of the whole program, because anybody that's on the lease program is going to pay a lot more than that. Um, it's going to take them forever to sort of build it out. So it's, it's, we waited for the technology to change, waited for them to be more efficient, and we waited for it to be more economically feasible for us to just buy out, um, outright the system. So, it's nothing at all for us to, uh, change a header or change a light, um, on a pole. It's going to be pretty neat.
If I may, for, for a future discussion on that matter.
Yes.
Um, just a question for tonight. You don't have to answer it, but what happens when the pole gets hit by a vehicle and there are other vendors on the pole, uh, which is a problem we have right now? We have double poles throughout the entire city. It's a real pain to get them down, so I'm just wondering if that's going to help.
These would be all the aluminum poles.
All aluminum.
All right, so on all the aluminum poles, there's no other infrastructure on them or other public utilities. But, on the wood ones that you're talking, that you're speaking to, we'll still have our heads, our arms, with the lights on them.
Okay.
We're responsible for those. The rest of it would still continue on to be, um, Verizon's responsibility or National Grid. I think it's mostly, um, David, I think most of the poles are owned by Verizon?
I think it's Baby, Half and Half.
Is it? Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, the only ones we're talking about buying are the, anything that's aluminum, and I don't know, there are a hundred or two-hundred of those, um, out there in the community. So, but yeah, good point. I'm glad you brought that up, okay. Uh, Litchfield Street, um, small bridge project replacement? And those are just some of the, uh, projects that are grant-funded that we're working on as we speak. Some of the challenges are, the state aid is still down seventeen and a half percent over ten years. The distance between required local contribution for education and state aid to the city continues to widen. So the city is paying more, and the state is paying less. And there's the gap. Next slide, please. Required spending, um, up minimal, state aid increase. So, again, here's the required local contribution, chapter seventy-eight, and the required net school spending. It shows that the, um, chapter seventy-eight is about two-point-nine-zero percent. And the required local contribution is up to eighteen percent, and that continues to widen each year. Chapter seventy, district profiles, limits the contribution up more than twice the state average. Um, this is the required local contribution summary. Statewide average increase right now is about twenty-one-point-five percent. Limits is, increase is forty-eight-point-eight percent. Other communities we listed here are Fitchburg, Lunenburg, Ashburnham, Westminster, Wachusett, and Neshoberg, uh, as a comparison in terms of, um, what their, um, percentage of increase, uh, in local contribution is. School enrollment, um, these are from, um, enrollment numbers. These are from DESI. So, we are, um, down from, uh, two thousand eight until now, which were projected at five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight. Again, those numbers, um, superintendent will, will inform you that those numbers are subject to change all through summer. We won't have our final numbers, uh, due until October, but those are preliminary, preliminary numbers. So we are down in terms of enrollment by three-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Uh, the general fund budget from twenty-thousand-eight till twenty-eighteen is up about twenty-five million dollars. Staffing levels fiscal year eight to present, school department increased personnel by eighty-six. City side increased personnel by three and a half, including this year's police officers. Excluding the fire department and the chief, eighteen school administrators make more money than the highest-paid department head. And these are questions that, what I did is, as the, as the budget was evolving, what I did is people had questions, and mostly, those questions come through either email or they come through my Facebook. And it became impossible for me to answer each question individually, so what I asked people to do is email me the question, and I'll leave it off in my office, and I would list a question and then the answer. And a lot of these questions that you see on my Facebook are questions that people asked, that they're just inquiring about. And people get upset, because they put the question up and the answer, but these are questions that people ask. I don't mind, uh, the question, I certainly don't mind answering them, but if it, uh, and all of these questions will be consolidated and put on our website, so now we can just refer people, because not everybody has Facebook, no, but not everybody uses social media. But, a great deal of people use, uh, the city's website, so a lot of this will be consolidated in the question and the answer, eliminating a lot of them. But the pertinent things will be put on our website, so people can see, uh, things like, you know, the, the fact that the state and the city's local contributions are separating. The city giving more, the state giving less. Limits the city budget for twenty-seventeen, operating budget sixty-five percent plus. Free cash spending on another one-point-one, point-six, uh, one-point-two, if I rounded it off, million for schools. Wendy, you want to explain this to, so this is the FY-seventeen operating budget. The sixty-five percent free cash spending on another, uh, one-point-one or one-point-two. So, that is the school department budget, plus additional transfers that we've made, John, from our free cash account to the school, uh, budget. Is that correct, John?
Yeah. I'm sure.
So it's sixty-five percent of the city's budget. And then, and in addition to that, about one-point, what did I say, one-point-two million?
Yep.
Uh, one-point-two million, uh, transferred over to the, um, school department. A lot of talk about the required spending, um, in the city. There is, this is, um, information from DESI. We asked them, this is the information they gave us. Uh, there were some years we were a million over, really dependent. And I really wanted to look at, when we hit fiscal nine and ten, how much would we cut, John? We cut like nine, nine million over time? We were cut by nine million. Even though we suffered, it was a bad economy. This is called the greatest recession since the Great Depression. And the fact that, um, there were major cutbacks, most school systems around the state, cities and towns were laying off. Uh, we held firm, um, on our commitment to education. We continued with our building project. It continued to, uh, again, shift money from our free cash account over to the, um, school department. There was one year that you see, there was four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Uh, that was a result of the, the, uh, school department not spending that money, and we ended up transferring that money back in the following year to give it back to them. Regional net school spending, over and under. Uh, here is some of the other cities that are around us. We don't have a lot to compare to in terms of cities. Gardner, over and under. Average of under by sixty-thousand dollars per year. Fitchburg, over and under, and an average of, uh, thirty-thousand dollars every year. And our average for the same time period is about six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. And again, on top of that, our transportation, and on top of that, our debt, our, um, our debt service that, again, doesn't get counted towards net school spend or the required amount. Here's the transportation cost paid by the city above net school spending, again. So these are all dollars that get appropriated, that do not show up in any net school spending account anywhere.
I have a question about transportation. Excuse me. Um, we have a contract, right? Do we have a bus contract with some company?
Sure, sure.
A contract for transportation?
Multiple, yeah.
Yeah, because, um, special needs, um, might use another service. It could be that service that goes through MART, a bunch of different people.
So what's the total cost of the contracts? What are we contractually obligated to play, to pay, I guess, for transportation?
You have to talk to the school department.
Yeah, a lot of it is based on service.
They oversee the special ed.
Who, um, who negotiates the contracts? And signs them on behalf of the city?
You'd have to talk to the school department.
Yeah, bid.
Okay.
The regular busing is bid.
Okay.
But the individual sped is handled through the school departments. And they might use a regional administrator.
Mm-hmm. So those contracts are all negotiated and signed by the school department?
You'd have to talk to Greg, who actually ends up signing it, uh, about the process, but it isn't. It used to be MART handled it for it, but then something happened there. And there's another vendor that handles it for, for them now. And so I think it changes as sped personnel come and go.
Right. I'm just trying to get a, get a handle on what's the total cost? Because it's usually funded. It's something like twenty percent less than what the. It's something like twenty percent less than what the cost ends up being. So I'm just wondering if we have bus contracts that have been negotiated and signed by the city, why are we not funding those contracts?
Well, I think, well, they have been paid in the past. Whether, you know, the city for a number of years and the mayor has agreed, not only to the appropriation at the beginning of the year, but also to use the Medicaid reimbursement money to further supplement, which has lately been about $850,000. And then there has been in the past, I'm not sure how long, couple of years, supplemental appropriations made by the school department from various accounts.
And if you're talking about the school buses that pick up the kids on the regular routes, that's, that's based on, that's based on level of service. So you can pick up every kid at every house?
Oh, I, I understand that, but I'm just curious. But the, but the city right now, based on the level of service that's been negotiated and discussed at the school committee?
It would be by bus. So you could eliminate buses.
I'm not talking about eliminating buses. All I'm trying to do is get at the cost of the current existing contracts and figure out, okay, they cost $5 million. But every year in the budget, it's a 3.2 or 3.3 line item in terms of the funding. So I'm trying to figure out, why is that?
Yeah, well, it is in the city that negotiated the, the full bus contract. And the city appropriated what was requested.
I don't think that, I mean, I've never heard the school department ask for less money for busing. I mean, because that's always a point, that's always a bone of contention. Yes, it's outside net school spending. But the allocation in the budget is always less than what the school department knows its costs are going to be. Because they know what the costs of the contracts are.
I don't know if it's always been that way.
And, John, if you just look at this, if you look at this slide? It's always less, by a lot of money.
You mean what we appropriated?
What the general fund includes?
Right.
And what the, what free cash ends up being appropriated. And I'm assuming that's to pay the full cost of whatever the busing contracts are in any given fiscal year?
Yes. And it has. And the city and the school department, at one point or another, started supplementing that with, either through their, I think their sped circuit breaker account? That is, you know, special education circuit breaker? And/or school choice?
But that's, that's another bone of contention. Because people argue that that money is not supposed to be spent on transportation. It's supposed to go back into classrooms. Well, they do.
I know they do.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand what the total cost is and why it's not funded.
Alright, at the end of the day, let's go back to the original budget, right? There's X amount of dollars that we have to allocate.
Right.
And so if, if the school department wanted to change the bus service, and special needs is separate. If they wanted to change the bus routes, maybe they didn't want to pick up, stop on Mechanic Street, every single street, but they wanted to create hubs. That's really a level of service, that's not a contract. What we do is we pay by the bus. So if they wanted to change that and eliminate five buses, which would eliminate, say, I don't know, half a million dollars a year, they could. That's, that's their decision. That's a school, that's a school committee superintendent decision.
And I hope, hopefully, the information will come out that, that they could do that.
Right, and that's what we're hoping.
We're hoping to find out what is, you know, what is the legal requirement? And then up from there.
So we go through the whole budget. At the end of the day, so we would have to raise another million, million and a half? We would have to raise just to cover the busing expenses if we don't use the money for Medicaid, Medicare reimbursement, and some free cash to offset it and some of the other expenses to them. So they can decide on the level of service that they want to do. So in other words, the school department can say, we're not, here's the level of service, and here's how much money, we're not gonna use our sped circuit breaker, we're not gonna use our school choice money. We're gonna decide on a bus transportation system that doesn't use that. That's totally up to them.
Aren't you on the school, I mean, what do you mean them? It's, it's, it's the school committee, right, that you're the chair of? So it's not them, it's kind of like, you're part of that conversation, right?
That's exactly what we're doing now, is we've hired somebody to review and decide on a level of service that is in the budget. We have a budgeted amount, we have to stay within the budgeted amount. Now, if the school committee decides that they wanna do more aggressive and they wanna stop at every single house, it's totally up to them, school committee and the superintendent, then they have to find other funds, they have to stay within their budget. So they have to find other funds to compensate for that.
So if there's a budget passed, they have to live within it. They don't have any authority to overspend it.
Right.
Right, right.
It may not, you know what I mean?
The contract that's bid is a unit contract.
Yes.
So, so what happens is you can't arrive at the final cost of the contract until you actually figure out how many units you use.
You can use eighteen buses, you can use twenty-one, you can use twenty-eight.
Well, it doesn't, it's not, you know, and just looking at this, it's not hard to figure out. I mean, it really isn't, because consistently, there are free cash appropriations. The last two years, it's been over eight hundred, over $800,000. So I'm just trying to figure out, okay?
Many more years than that.
No, but the last two, you know, I'm just looking at, you can look at the slide. I'm just trying to figure out, okay, why is a known cost? Because the, the cost, or at least the general fund appropriation doesn't vary that much. So somebody must know what the cost is going to be. And why isn't the budget reflecting that? Or the general, the general fund appropriation? Why, why aren't they more in sync? Okay, well, that's...
If, they get a budget, right, there's a budgeted amount. They have to stay within the budget. If, if, if they decide that the, the, the school committee ultimately and the superintendent decide they wanna offer a more, you know, a better bu, a better bus service, they wanna pick up more often, more kids, they wanna offer, they can. I mean, but they have to stay within the budget. If they decide not to, and they leave that budgeted amount, okay? Whatever that amount is, if it was 3.2 million last year or four million, they have to stay within that amount. If they decide to leave that amount, then they have to come up with that money from other places. So that is why the school committee now is, has somebody that they retain to look at all the bus routes, to see if they can't bring that amount down to stay within that budgeted amount. So we anticipate having to use some more money to, some additional funding to fund transportation. We expect to return the, and again, that money for Medicaid, Medicare, there is nothing that says that has to go back to the school department. Many cities don't give it back. Some give half, some give a third. We give it all and consistently, right down the line, every year, we return that. It always goes back to transportation. So they can hire eighteen buses for, they can hire twenty-eight for more aggressive sort of pickup if they want, but they've gotta stay within the budget. So if they don't, they have to find that money from other places. That's totally a decision, all we do is bid out the unit cost for transportation. Decide they want more aggressive and they wanna pick up more kids and stop at every house, totally up to them. If they wanna do that and say, look, we wanna take a vote. We wanna pick up every single kid at every single house, every age group, totally up to them. We give them a budgeted amount. If they go over that, then they have to use those other funds.
And the timing of the Medicaid money? We wait to see how much they collect during the fiscal year. And so at the end of the year, then we know how much cash we actually got. And then we feel confident giving it back to them. You know, especially in this day and age where who knows what's gonna happen to Medicaid reimbursements?
If the police department wants, there's a, here, so I'll pick on him. But if the police department wants to, you know, fund, I don't know, a particular expense on something, and, and we appropriate a million dollars for it, but he decides it's something important that he wants to do and he can use other funds, because remember, we pass salary wages and then expenses. If he feels that that's something within his department that he needs to offer and is a more aggressive service or, or, you know, a more, he needs more equipment, then he can take that from other accounts if he feels strongly about it, but he's gotta stay within his budget. He can't say, well, I wanted to buy new motorcycles and I went out and, you know, I was budgeted $30,000, but I went out and spent a hundred. And then say, well, I need the other eighty. That's, so it's budgeted amount, you live within the budget. And it, and it's the school committee that decides and the superintendent, the level of service that we offer. And now they're working on it, they're trying to come up.
Do we know?
And hopefully, it's a conscious decision.
Do we know what the percentage of the, last year that the special education transportation is of the entire amount that was spent?
I'm not sure.
That's the school department.
It's the school department.
And we can ask that tomorrow night.
Yes. So it's based on a level of service, what we decide to, to offer for the level of service. Same with, you know, plowing or any other service in the city. It's, it's based on that. So at one time, we had like twenty-eight buses, and then we cut some back. It's all depends what you wanna do. And that's what that's being, that's what's being looked at right now, is, is there a better way, a more efficient and a less expensive way to do it? Otherwise, the city will be spending $5 million on transportation, and we only budgeted, all it was in the budget last year that was asked for was 3.2. And we added additional 860 to make it 4.1, and it was still short. So...
And just as a, a little story, I remember we were having financial problems in the 1990s. And I called DOE, asked, you know, about what, you know, you could do. And the gentleman from DOE back in the 1990s said, "Lemonster is busing a lot more people than many other communities." And I don't know if that's true or that it wasn't. But, and hopefully, the mayor and people will know, you know, what's, what, if they are busing over, what's required and what that cost is. And there can be a meeting of the minds between everybody. And, but, at the end of the day, when the mayor and the city appropriates money, the school department has to live within what was appropriated. There's no, there's no statutory authority to overspend.
I don't see what the, I'm looking at the fiscal 17 budget. And in fiscal 16, the mayor proposed 3.155 for transportation. And the department, the school department's budget was the same, 3.155. I don't know what the school department requested in fiscal 17, because I don't think it appears there. But at least in 16, what the mayor, what the mayor put forward and what the school department requested were the same. That's, that's in the fiscal...
And that has been, and that has been the case.
That's in the fiscal 17 budget?
Yep, no, I can, I see that.
But if, again, if you're gonna spend more than 4.1, and you're gonna go to 5 million, that other $900,000 has to come from somewhere. It just doesn't appear. It's, you know, and that's why they get a budget. So if the school committee decides that they want a more aggressive transportation, you know, pick up to and from school, and, you know, and, and we've had the discussion about picking up kids because it's safe, and then we've had all those good discussions and some places don't have sidewalks, then it can. The problem is they have to still stay within the budget. Because there isn't another $900,000 to give them at the same time that we're trying to get up our numbers for net school spending and also, you know, increase the amount of money that we're spending on our capital or our debt service for our school buildings. So at the end of the day, there's, there's, we have a budget. City has a budget. We give each department a budget, and they have to stay there. And again, if the chief again wants to go out and spend money on something else that he thinks is much more important, and he can take it from those other accounts, then he can. And that's the same thing with the school department. I think they're trying to reshape that, see if there are some other alternatives in changing bus routes and times, whether that might bring it down. And that's what we're waiting for, before we can properly fund this. But we do have to see some cost savings, and there is gonna be a budget. There will be an amount that they're gonna have to stay within. Otherwise, they have to use those other funds from other accounts. You can't just spend, overspend and then say, well, we don't wanna touch these other accounts. We want you to pick up the cost. That's, that's illegal to do. You can't spend more than what's in your budget.
Well, the school department budget, I'm just looking at the line items. They asked for 4.8 million for transportation, which is closer to probably what they're expecting in terms of cost, based on the way that they're doing business today. And that's what they asked for.
They asked for that.
And in the budget, the mayor's budget is 3.35 million.
Right.
Right, so...
Hopefully with 850, with Medicaid money to come.
Right, so I guess they have a budget.
In some fact, that they plan on cutting back on some of the bus service, that should all equal a balanced budget at the end of the year.
Yeah, we have to see the information. I mean, the mayor would like...
We don't have, but we, we don't know what the total amount is gonna be after they...
You know, what the statutory responsibility is, and then from there, then go from there.
So you're arguing that the school department doesn't know what its...
It doesn't, correct.
Costs are?
Correct.
Nope.
Okay, well, they did, just for the record, they put in 4.8 million.
They have a cost there. But the people we talked to, we asked, what's, what's the state minimum and what would that cost? We don't have a figure.
So the, so the policy question ultimately is how, how that gap is gonna get closed?
Right, and that's what's not answered yet.
Is it gonna get closed through efficiencies? Is it gonna get closed through appropriation during the year for free cash?
Right.
At some point, you know, we're gonna have to come to hopefully a meeting of the minds.
Right, 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 right. But, but I'm looking at, you know, seven years here. And it, that's the way it's always been done. You know, clearly, there is a level of service that doesn't look like it's changed much. And the city has always made that up in some form. My question is, if you know what the real costs are, fund it or don't. You know what I mean? Instead of playing games?
It has been funded. We're not playing games, we funded it.
Not at all. I think, last year, alright, let's go through this one more time, so everybody understands it.
Yep.
You have the budget book there.
I do.
What did you, as the city council, what did the superintendent ask for last year? In last year's budget, 2017?
I don't know, because it's not in here.
It's not in the book.
It's not in the book.
2017?
2017 is not in here, your budget is.
It was 3.8, right.
Right.
I might be able to help you with that number.
Yeah. We funded what was requested last year. And the year before, and the year before. We funded what was requested. Now, it's gone from 3.2 to 5 million. Clearly, something has to change. There is no money to make, to put in the budget. In other words, what you're asking is, you're asking me to put that in the budget, correct?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out why the budget doesn't reflect the real costs. You know, and if the cost, I'm looking at 2015. Back then, it was, the appropriation was 3.6 million in the general fund. There was another 481,000 appropriated from free cash for a total of 4.1 million. So that was back three years ago.
But I think Medicaid...
The Medicaid reimbursement.
Reimbursement jumped up.
We're using Medicaid, Medicare reimbursement from the previous year to add to the cost. We just don't know what the final number is gonna be.
And remember...
We use half the transportation every year.
Remember Prop two and a half? The world changed with Prop two and a half, okay? It used to be, prior to Prop two and a half, the school department would tell the city how much it needed. And then the city would fund it.
For busing?
For anything, for their budget, for everything. Prop two and a half came, and the people said, no, no more. Revenues first.
Right.
Then you can, you have to adopt a level of expenses within the revenues you have. So that world changed thirty-five years ago? Okay, so I think just the mayor is saying, you know, at the end of the day, when there's a budget passed, they have to live with that. There's no statutory alternative.
Right, and you suggested we don't give back the money for Medicaid, Medicare for transportation?
No, absolutely not.
Well, I'm not sure, and Wendy's just saying, so he was, I don't, I'm confused.
I think that, I think the debate is that the city, the city side is looking, is looking for efficiencies to control the cost of the transportation. I think what councils, I don't wanna put words in them, but I think what the council at large is indicating is the school department has a pretty good handle on what it's gonna spend.
What's it gonna cost?
And, and that's what they're requesting to be appropriated.
But that's not...
The city side is saying, well, look, let's take a look at this so we can make it more efficient, more, more, more cost efficient before we determine finally how it's gonna get funded.
The amount that's in there is the amount if we do nothing. If we don't use the Medicaid, Medicare, that's the amount if we do nothing. If we don't use the Medicaid Medicare, that's the amount if we do nothing. So those numbers aren't correct, because we do have to do something. Unless the city, unless the school department wants to continue to take money out of those other accounts, we do have to do something.
Historically.
Cause that takes money out of the classroom.
Right, but we know historically, we're gonna give them the Medicaid.
Exactly.
So that, that's eight hundred thousand, some odd dollars of the five million.
And that comes, and we know that.
So then there's, there's a spread of another eight and nine hundred thousand.
And then we plan on using some free cash, which is gonna bring it up, but there's still a gap. And we're hoping that this person that we're hiring is gonna close the gap, and then I come back with a better number that's not five million, that's more like four point five million. That's what we're hoping.
Okay.
But that's to be determined, and Kristin Jelinez, uh, I'm sorry, Kristin.
Owlet.
Owlet, Jelinez Owlet, on our school committee has been very active in the process, has been working very diligently on this, and we have a meeting beginning on July tenth to address this exact situation, cause we've gotta cut that amount down, we know that. I think we've all agreed on it, we've gotta do a better job of that. So that number of four point eight, if I put it in the budget, isn't even a real number. And where would we get the difference between four million and five? We'd have to raise another million dollars, and that's where that increase that I put out there, what it would cost to refund, um, to fund, everything the school department asked for would be about a ten percent increase in the tax rate. And that's where that other, that, that other million would be included in it.
Alright, good, I think we've beaten out pretty well.
Okay, anyway, you can look at, uh, kids are gonna.
There's gonna be philosophical differences, but there, is there any information that's needed at this juncture? Okay, so, okay.
I, I, I would like information from the school department on how much school choice money they've had to put into busing in the last three years. If it's impacted their school choice money, receipts.
Again, if they, if they wanna have a better bus service, that's up to them.
Right.
That isn't, that isn't up to me, or you.
I'll ask them. And I also'd like to take a look at their ridership as far as who's paying, who's not, and how much are they receiving in receipts and that as well.
About fifty thousand a year.
That's what it is.
And I think the other question you wanna ask is, what are we obligated? Who are we obligated to pick up?
Right, right.
How many, it certainly creates, I think there's some misunderstanding, even on my end, on what the school department is required, or what the city is required.
Do you wanna move on to some of the other?
Yes, alright, kids who are gonna be out of school this Thursday? Oh, I'm sorry, Council Freedom.
Um, I'm just, just curious, there's no, um, when I was on the school committee, it was pre-ed reform, but it was a pretty simple process. We knew what we wanted to do with busing. There was a consensus with all the administrators, plan was put in place, then it went out to bid, and it was either a three-year or a five-year contract, and it was incremental with accelerated costs for gasoline that went up. There was a process, so you knew every year what the bus contract was gonna be.
With regular.
You don't do that anymore?
With regular education, you do.
Yeah.
But sped has changed.
Right.
Yeah, but you still do that with red, regular education.
Yeah.
Based on the amount of buses, by the units.
Yeah, by units.
But you know what the budget has to be.
If you want eighteen buses, this is the amount. If you want twenty one.
But that's all in the specs when it goes out to bid, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, on that part. I think it's the sped that's the issue.
I, I think the other area is, for some reason, um, you know, the school department has to go out to bid late for the last contract for buses. I think next, you know, next time, we would go out very early in the process. That allows more companies to be able to bid, I think there's some cost savings there as well. Anyway, when we leave, um, school this, this, um, Thursday, um, we need to keep kids busy, keep, uh, them doing constructive things, and keep reinforcing their skills. Here are some of the other grants, park and playground upgrades, um, that is what the total amount of the projects, that is the, what the city paid for those projects. We're going to Doyle Field expenditures, again, uh, total funds spent, and then the city portion, uh, on Doyle Field, and these are all the different upgrades to Doyle Field. A lot of, um, businesses in town, either in kind or made cash donations, which do not show up in that slot. Tax rate, um, two and a half percent increase gives you about one point seven million. The city's FY seventeen increased budgetary contribution to the schools is a total of about one point six million. Taxical implications, um, if we go over net school spending by what the school committee asked for, and we list that all out on these slides. And my favorite slide of all is the one that I started with, and I continue to read every day, during times of prosperity, prosperity of danger lurks everywhere, growth masks waste, extravagance, and inefficiencies. The moment growth slows, the accumulated signs of the past are revealed all the way to the bottom line. And that is something that we practice here at City Hall all the time. Basically, what it means is during the good days, you get ready for the bad days, cause those bad days are gonna come, and we've seen that over years, every ten years, in terms of our, uh, cycle. Talking money for stabilization for the schools, um, let me just answer a couple of these things real quick, um, because these are the reoccurring things that seem to come up every time there's an issue about schools. So, people will say, well, how come we don't use our one-time money, which is our stabilization and our free cash, for fixed cost? I don't know if anybody here wants to sort of tackle that, um, but Department of Revenue, in my function as, um, a, uh, management representative for the Joint Labor Management Board for the state, uh, one of the things that I see when I visit other cities, the first thing that I see, um, from Moody's or a bond rating agency will be, um, for them, uh, to really begin the process of less reliance on one-time money for fixed cost. It's the thing, the number one thing, that's hurting cities and towns across the state, it, 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 that's hurting them drastically. And Moody's sees that as a red flag. Department of Revenue, in their own, um, in their own sort of memos, and their newsletters that they put out, and their policies are very, um, stringent when it comes to that, in terms of their recommending to cities and towns, that you do not use one-time money. So, a number of people say, well, why don't you just take the stabilization money and kick it into the school department, and, um, that will solve all the problems. Well, it won't. It's bad fiscal, uh, policy, um, when we do get reviewed again, because we're gonna be getting reviewed for when we go out to borrow from the police station, uh, they're gonna see that. That's gonna affect how much it costs us to borrow money to pay for the police station. Um, and it, again, Department of Revenue sees that, and that's a red flag to them as well. But if you look at, um, how much we have spent on school projects, we, we take about five point five million out of our stabilization account. We pay cash for the projects, and again, we save money, and then we pay ourselves back in the stabilization account. This is a slide from the Department of Revenue. Free cash is a revenue source that results from a calculation as of July one, of a community remaining unrestricted funds from its operation of the previous years, based on the balance sheet as of June thirtieth. So, any of those dollars that we have at the fire department, so let's just say for the fire department, for instance, goes out, ambulance collections, those ambulance collections that come in late, or excess tax amounts that might come in late, where somebody comes in or a tax title, a grant reimbursement, those are all one-time things. They're all gonna come in, and those are unrestricted, but those aren't things that we can count on every year. We don't know we're gonna end up having tax title money, we don't know that the fire department's gonna have, those funds come in every year. So again, those are dollars that we don't use, Department of Revenue doesn't want us using for fixed cost. It typically includes actual receipts and excess revenue estimates, and unspent amounts of departmental budgetary line items for the year, uh, just ended, plus unexpended free cash from the previous year. Free cash is offset by property tax receivables and certain deficits, and as a result, can be a negative number, which we saw. It is recommended that communities adopt a free, a free cash policy that avoids supplementing current year departmental operations, which we've adopted. As a non-recurring revenue source, free cash should be restricted to paying one-time expenditures, funding capital projects, or replenishing other, other reserves like the stabilization account. And the last question that I get, that comes up, that reoccurs, is why the city doesn't have a Department of Revenue, um, review? So, two pieces of this. Some people think it means an audit. An audit would only come if your city has become insolvent, it doesn't have money to pay its bills, and it's basically become, it needs to be taken over. We have an audit done every year. There's certain, uh, in the audit will be recommendations, uh, to us, and it could be a series of recommendations, and we will, uh, look at those recommendations, recommendations, and take action. The other one is basically a sharing of best practices, um, similar to what the state did when they put out these, uh, these, these grants here, Commonwealth, what do they call it, Commonwealth Collaboratives, what do they, um, what's the word that they use? The money that we got from the?
Community compacts.
Community compacts. It's basically best practices that are shared throughout the Commonwealth. I don't, you guys wanna touch on that in terms of?
I think what he's trying to explain is that, um, the reason why there isn't an audit for us is because we follow best practices with our finance team, John, uh, obviously with Department of Local Services requirements, myself with assessing requirements. So each year, when we submit forms and to get our tax rate approved, or to get our budget approved, to get free cash approved, we follow all the standard operating procedures that they require us to do. And, uh, we, we do run through a lot of hoops to, uh, submit to them to get approval, submit extra letters or, um, balances that they require to approve us, so we go through those processes. And not everyone has an audit done every year, but obviously, for the size of our budget, and, and us being a city, and the, and it's, it's best practice to have ourselves audited each and every year, um, by a professional company. And when they do that, um, they, if, if there was an issue, uh, we would get what's called a management letter, um, which would require us to do some corrective action, and we don't get management letters. Um, and John can speak to that, because he always, uh, deals a lot more than David does with the auditors than I do, I, I deal with a small piece of it, but, uh, that's kind of a, a practice that we run through, and is the reason why an audit isn't needed.
If they saw that we didn't have a capital improvement plan, that we didn't have a finance team, or some of the other things that they might recommend in terms of.
Very rudimentary. And, uh, as you can see, an urban community such as Lemonster, to be rated as high as we are, is, um, we're not on their list of worries at all. And, um, so.
But we're not shy, and if there were things, uh, that we saw, that we were all in contact with, uh, Department of Revenue, we work with them very closely, if there was something that they offered to us, kinda like a course list, or again, best practices, or having a particular issue with something, we would certainly bring them in and ask them, could you, you know, help us? There will oftentimes, many times, these, these agencies call us for help, so we can assist other cities and towns that maybe don't have some of the systems in place that we do. We certainly wouldn't be shy, um, if there are other systems and, and, uh, policies in place, or, or that were needed here in the city, that we needed assistance, we would more than, be more than willing to call on those other, um, Department of Revenue or other cities and towns to help us out, uh, through some other, um, areas that we maybe weren't so, so good at.
But, um, and there's one more thing that I think we'd like to touch on, um, that's in here, is the use of bond money to fund operating expenses is not allowed. There's no statutory authority to do that. As a matter of fact, if you were in a position that you had to bond, you know, five million dollars to fund an operating budget, you'd need a special act of the legislature. And the only, cause there's no authorization. And the only way to get a special act is to submit for a special act, and that would trigger, uh, Finance Control Board. Okay? So, I just, we just wanted to put that to rest, that's not even an option.
Okay.
This is a policy decision by a local community, and that's been following best practices for a long time.
That's helpful. I do wanna go back, though, to the Department of Revenue review, because the Department of, I, I understand audits, and they look for financial, you know, discrepancies, and those would obviously come back.
Even the management recommendations, you know what I mean? They're, they're generic, basic, that the city of Lemonster is well beyond.
Well, the Department of Revenue does, um, financial management system reviews, among other things.
Yeah.
And they provide technical assistance at no cost to a city or town.
Yeah.
And they have done a number of them. If you, if people in the public are interested, they can go to the Department of Revenue site and look at reports.
Yep.
And the city of Gardner, I think, has had them in two or three times, city of Fitchburg's had them in, other communities have had them in.
Can understand that.
And they don't necessarily look at numbers, budgeted numbers, but they look at processes, and they look at helping communities become more efficient.
Right.
And in times like this, where I would argue that we are in really a budget crisis.
We're not.
We're not.
The city of Lemonster is not.
The school department certainly, well, you, what do you mean we are? You, you would not agree that the school department is facing a crisis?
There are two separate budgets, one is the school department budget.
We are all the city of Lemonster.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
One is the city, and, and one is a, a school department budget. This city is not in crisis, and if you're asking us to bring people in for no reason at all, we haven't hired but three people in twenty-four years, how much more efficient can you get than that? There are no people left in this building working, and we managed to get all of this worked on.
But the city.
We're our own computer system, we're our own computer department.
The city budget includes the school department. Wait, 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 excuse me, John.
Sure.
The city of Lemonster is not exclusive of the school department, and you always talk like that, and you talk like it's them, and it's their problem to fix. We are in this community together. I, I'm a taxpayer, I look around this room, and I see a lot of taxpayers, and when we have a budget crisis like we have right now in the school department, I don't care where it came from, it's developed over a number of years, it is something the city has to address. Laying off seventy teachers, a hundred and twenty teachers, fifty teachers, decimating advanced placement classes at the high school, taking away athletic programs, ruining the music programs and the other arts programs that have been developed over a number of years in Lemonster by very, very thoughtful and hardworking teachers and administrators, you don't think the city has a crisis? The school department budget in crisis, believe it or not, Dean, belongs to you.
To me.
You're the mayor of the whole city. Yeah, it does.
Me.
You're the mayor of the entire city, you've been the chairperson of the school committee for twenty-four years, who else is going to take responsibility for this? Who else is going to work to fix the problem?
Hold on, hold on. When we pass a budget, where's that budget go for the school department? You vote on the budget, where's it go?
It goes to you, and we've, no, it then comes back, comes to the city council.
It doesn't, it doesn't. See, I, I think you're misunderstanding the process, it doesn't. When we pass a budget, it goes to the school department. They have total fiscal autonomy. They, as soon as we pass that budget, they can do whatever they want with that money. I have no control, and I think you have, um, either intentionally or unintentionally misled people to think that the mayor has some role in the budget once it gets passed. I have no, none, zero.
You're the chair of the school committee.
I have zer, and I chair the meeting. Mr. Cormier is the chair of this, this board, he doesn't run the city. He has no authority. I chair the meetings, but I don't have any authority over the superintendent, he, he has a budget, and he has to stay within the budget. The school committee's responsibility is to make sure the superintendent stays within the budget. How, and how this has been placed on me, I don't understand. There's X amount of dollars in the city, we budget it, we sit here, we give everybody a budget, police department will get a budget, library will get a budget, and they have to stay within the budget, because there is only so many dollars. I don't own a money machine, there is no money machine.
Right, right, and you know what?
So where are you suggesting this money comes from?
I don't know.
There you go.
I don't know, but you know what? I haven't been sitting at that table, and I haven't been participating in those budget conversations for twenty years either, and pretending to provide leadership for a school department that is in disarray, serious, serious financial straits and serious disarray.
Could I just say, I would argue, no, let me just say, I would argue.
She's not on the financial team, she can speak.
I would just say.
I wasn't addressing her.
Okay, first of all, we don't have any line item budget from the school department, something you should be angry about, I would suspect.
Wouldn't you, as the financial team, and as the ultimate person of responsibility for city finances, be responsible?
Hold on, hold on, let's cut the vitriol down, we're accomplishing nothing. We have the schools coming in tomorrow night.
Right.
We can address it, there, there's some policy questions here, so some issues, it's about budgeting at the end of the day, we don't have to get all excited about it. Does, does anybody in the finance, uh, committee have questions for the mayor and his team at this juncture, including yourself, Councilor Schalke-Zefer? Do you have any questions for the, for the financial team?
How is the city going to handle and address what's happening in the city's school department budget?
Alright, the first thing is, um, the year end is coming, there's gonna be an audit done. We still don't have a good handle on the last two or three years, and the finance committee, um, in the school committee has been really working real hard to, to, um, determine exactly what is the, the budget, and what is the, where are the finances, and where's the money what is the budget, what is the, where are the finances, and where is the money going, where was the money going, and why do we have these deficits? That's the first thing. But we need an audit. That's the first thing we need to understand is an audit. So, at the end of the day, as much as you want to sort of take all of this and place it all here, that is my responsibility to fund everything. Look in your book. Every single department asked for more money than they're going to get. If I was to fund that, there's not enough money in this city to fund all those budgets. They get a budget, and they stay within the budget. So, there are, I said this back in December. I said to the school committee, I said, "This is easy to figure out. We passed a budget, we passed an increase for salaries for $2 million. Insurance goes up by six, we got away with 6%. It usually goes up 8% to 9%, sometimes 12." That's another $700,000, $800,000 in the school department budget. There's 100 less kids. There goes another $1 million. We were underfunded, they underfunded the budget. They didn't put things in the budget from last year that they should have. That's another $700,000. Add all that up, and you're talking $5 million, that money they don't have. Where does it come from? It either means cuts from other departments. It's really, it's not that difficult. It's the same way you run your house. It's either cuts from other departments, or you raise $5 million through taxation. That's how you fix the problem. One or the other. Or, they have to stay within their budget. That's the three, and I explained that to the school committee in December, and January, and February. There is no other alternatives. You can't borrow to fix the money. You can use free cash and stabilization, but that's not a good way. That brings the city back 25 years. That doesn't do anything. That sends red flags to everybody that we're making, we're doing terrible things with our money, and that's just going to cost the taxpayers more money. And then what do you do next year when you don't have that money? Now you need another $5 million, plus another $5 million. Now you need $10 million. So, this isn't my problem. You've tried to make it my problem conveniently, but then when I ask you where is the money coming from, you don't know. I know where it's coming from. I gave you three places where it's coming from. Future taxation through an override, which you can lead the charge on if you wish. You can talk to the clerk's office, they'll explain how you do that. Cuts from other departments, or they stay within their budget. Those are the three places. Unless, the school committee voted last night to ask for freezes for management positions within the school department, and to ask the unions, instead of a 2% increase this year, to take a 1%. Now, they didn't say they had to, but they asked them. And I thought that was pretty brave of the school department. That was unanimous. Everybody in the school committee asked for that. That's another way we can fund this. And, another way is donations. So, a lady on 11th Street that's barely making, you know, her ability to stay within her house, can't afford another $300 a year, maybe I can afford six. Three for my house, three for theirs. We have a new donation account that's been established, where people can make donations. I'm going to make a donation, but I don't know that somebody else down in another neighborhood, or somebody that works in a factory, who maybe just bought their house, first house for the first time, and everything they make, including overtime money, is what's going to pay their bills. Maybe they can't afford another $3, $5, $600 increase in their taxes. But, you and I can write a check, we can afford it. That's another way we can finance this. So, there are the four ways that we can solve this problem. There are no other ways.
I have one other quick question. Excuse me, and this is for John.
Here's the finance team, you can ask them. I mean, they're part of the finance team.
This is a quick one for John. John, earlier you had said that the, you explained the way that the retirement, or the healthcare benefits are charged back to the, the healthcare costs. Retirement, health?
Not health.
Not, it's retirement, it's pension cost?
Health is, it's pension.
Okay, it's pension cost.
Because the health costs are solely paid by the school department.
Okay. So this is pension. Does pension cost, right, for retirees?
Yes.
Okay. Does, do other...
Well, it's for active and retirees.
It's for active and retirees. So it's all pension costs?
Yep.
Okay, related to school department employees and retirees?
Yes.
Okay, gets charged back. Do any, do you do that calculation for any other city department? Does the police department pay that, or the fire department?
No, because it's not part of, no other city department has a spending requirement. And if they did, I'm sure that would be part of the calculation. Okay? This, these are, that is the state method of calculating. They, they get aid for their benefits, and one of them is the retirement benefits.
In other words, it's solely related to net school spend?
It's net school spending. Education is the only department we do any of those calculations for.
Right, because...
Except for water and sewer, we do it for them, and we charge them.
And that's because the city has a required amount that it must pay upfront, and this is a way of charging back some expense?
No, it isn't a way, it's the law. It's legally required. I mean, it's the statutory method to charge the school department for expenses they incur. Remember, I don't agree with foundation budget in their formula. I think it's outdated. I think they've been using, especially in healthcare, they've been using CPI when there is a separate health CPI that grows a lot faster, and so I think it's outdated. They also don't let you charge in the foundation budget, OPEB active cost. You have teachers, you know, hundreds of teachers there, who are earning a benefit for retiree healthcare in the millions of dollars it costs, that the DOE says you can't charge, isn't part of the foundation budget, or net school spending, or you can't put money away for the day they retire. So you have a 22-year-old teacher, you can't start paying that bill till they're 60 years old? How smart is that? That is like, so behind the times. Remember, 2018 is 10 years since Gadsby recommended the funding of OPEB, because it's the most cost-efficient way to do it. Okay? It's the only fair way to do it. It's generationally equitable. We've been doing it that way for pensions. You know, our pension appropriation, all 11 of you, all nine of you, plus all active employees, we're putting money away every year, so that the day you retire, we have enough there to pay your pension for your expected life. Okay? But the DOE says, "We're not going to allow you to do that for healthcare." Where they're, what? You know, it's just not, I don't agree with it, but that's the law. So we follow what the statute says.
Thank you.
Consul Maschen?
I'm also final, thank you.
Any other member of the council have a question at this juncture, before we move to the library? Consul Dobrowski?
Yeah, I just, what is our current bond rating?
Double A2.
Double A2? And then what's the next one below that?
Double A3.
Double A3, would be higher or lower?
It's lower.
Lower.
But it's, you know, it's just the fiscal practices that just make eminent sense, that get you in the positions. It took, you know, a lot of people say, "Look at Lemonster." I go to joint, the Joint Service Committee in the legislature, and they'll see things that Lemonster has done. Well, I'll tell you, it's only because it's fiscal discipline.
No, I, I understand that. I understand that philosophy.
Right. And so, like, when you talk about stabilization fund, I like to say, like, if you had, because our stabilization fund is like 10% of revenues. So if your family income, I know it's a bigger number than people are probably used to, but if your family income was $50,000 in Lemonster, and you owned a house and a car and stuff, would it be really too much to have $5,000 in the bank for problems that arose? You know, so it's just not, that is such a big part of the equation in reviewing the use of fund balances. And I think that's something, frankly, maybe out of this, other departments, the school department, if they had been using fund balance to artificially spend higher than their ongoing expenses in the past, hopefully that practice will stop. Because I remember not too long ago, they had sped circuit breaker money at the, on June 30th, equal to about a year's worth of revenues.
No, but I think what I'm, what I'm trying to get at, I appreciate that...
Nobody ever likes to talk to us about this stuff, so we get excited.
Okay, having that bond rating, I mean, what are the, what are the specific benefits of that? What are the specific benefits of having the money in the stabilization account?
That is, it's...
And having the bond rating?
Oh, for, well, it's the practices you employ to achieve it. For instance...
No, we've achieved it. So what are the benefits?
Okay, let's take one. Part of the reason is the pension system, the strength. If you notice, this year, in the past couple of years, it hasn't, our appropriation hasn't increased. All right? Because we're so well-funded. Where places next to us is going up like $900,000.
Each year that they have to...
And it'll be, and it'll be going up, and we're fully funded in 2021, where, and by the way, you know, the community next to us is paying, I think their cost was $2.9 million in retirement expenses in '16, whereas ours was 2.6. But theirs is going up astronomically to 2032. So even the school department is going to be heavily impacted for the next 15 years. So, we're seeing benefits, not only when we get fully funded, but we're seeing benefits year to year now. If we had to come up with $900,000 for pension, that's because we put into practices, put into place practices that Moody's and Gadsby say, "You're a well-run community." And if you read our write-ups, that's what they say, and they encourage us. And as a matter of fact, I hate to, they say we're under in our fund balances.
John, I think what the council is getting at is we have a bond rating that's advantageous, so what is the advantage to us of it?
That's one of them.
I gave you one.
But when a bond is placed by Moody's or one of these bond services...
Simply, the interest rate is less. That's a direct, that's a direct assist. But there's a lot more to it than that.
When we built one of the schools, David, we had to get a special insurance, because the bonding rating was so low at the very beginning. So we had to get like almost a PMI insurance to guarantee that, you know, we could make the payments. So, those are just some of the things. But honestly, every city and town is getting away, even the state, I'm on Mastar, and we've gotten away. And the legislature's trying to put this in as part of the legisla, part of the law, is that we can't use that bond money or one-time money for fixed cost, for labor cost. We're really getting away, because obviously you've heard in MBTA and through Mastar, through all the employees, they're running this massive deficit for retirement. So, they're saying, "No more of this shifting line over as one-time." So, those are just some of the benefits. But you clearly want a high bond rating, when that's, that's everything we've worked for all of these years.
Oh, no, I agree. I guess I'm just having trouble with the concept that the money in the stabilization account somehow allows us to contribute less to benefit packages. I guess, I guess, I guess you lost me on that, John. Maybe you could try to...
Part of the bond rating, let me try to explain. Part of the good bond rating is because of how we've managed the, one key component.
No, I get that, I get that. But I'm talking John's first point. I guess I just didn't understand what you were saying.
About what? What angle is that?
Well, let me start all over. I asked the question, "What is the benefit of the high bond rating and the money in the stabilization account? What is the benefit?" And then you were talking about benefit packages to city employees and how we...
Well, those are the practices that we employed to achieve a strong bond rating.
Okay.
But John wants to know is, now that you got the bond rating, what does it do for us?
Well, it costs us, every day, we borrow money internally. It saves us when we go out to bond. I mean, it's looked at heavily, like a hawk by everybody. I mean, it's, it's a well-known number, and it's a well-known number that they want to see grow over time.
For instance, let's just say you took money out of the stabilization, started using it for one-time cost, fixed cost. Everyone would see that. DOR would see it, Moody's would, everyone would see it and say, "There they go. They took the bait." We can see where this is starting to go. They're going against all good fiscal policy. They're starting to use that money. They took the bait. Next year, they're going to be in the same predicament. And this is what happens, I see it all the time in cities, other cities, is, they say, "Well, let's just use, this year, we got to get through the budget. Let's use $2 million in stabilization account, out of stabilization. We'll fix the problem, and next year, we won't have this problem." And then guess what? Next year comes, guess what they need? $4 million.
No, I understand that, but I guess the answer to my question is, the benefit to the city is...
Low borrowing costs?
Low borrowing costs, perhaps, perhaps a better break on insurance, things like that. I mean, that's the benefit.
And quite honestly, a lot of businesses, when they're borrowing money, large businesses are borrowing money, oftentimes when they do a review or profile of the area, our bond rating comes up there. Because they don't want to invest in a place that, you know, where the bond rating is low, because that's, that affects risk, right? In other words, eventually, there are going to be some problems, and guess what? It's going to be passed off to the taxpayer. Similar to the pension. The last line in the Pioneer Institute report looking at pensions said, "Watch where you buy a house, because if they're not properly funding their pension, it's going to cost you, the taxpayer. So watch out."
The, just the first example, I think the library bonds are about $9 million, correct, John?
Yep.
And the debt service on those bonds is, I think I read, with just about $120-something thousand dollars annually, $129 or $28,000 annually?
No, it's about $760,000.
No, no, I mean, just for the interest.
Oh, interest, yeah.
Which gives you an idea of how cheap it is for the city to borrow money.
And over the past, you know, 20-something years, the finance team has developed trust with Moody's and other entities to do the right thing.
Mark, by me?
Yeah?
So, I have a feeling I know where the Consul of Lodge was going with the question. And I appreciate the explanation, because it becomes very evident and clear the value of having such a rating. But, is there a tipping point where we don't have to go any higher to maintain that same rating? And if in fact, you know, what are we anticipating having in that account sometime during the year when all the monies are certified, et cetera, to transfer in? Can we keep some money out?
We, we...
Can we keep more, can we keep more money out than we have in the past practices?
We haven't been putting, we have not been putting much in there. The only, we've been using it on an interim basis before free cash, so we repay that, which was 2.55 million. And all we do is grow, say if our revenues grow by $4 million, we try to add $400,000 to it.
Right.
That's all we try to do. But however, we are told all the time, it's too low. We need to get, and we haven't pushed this yet, but they want us at 25%.
Right. So going back to the old overlay and reserve account.
Yep.
My understanding back then was that a certain percentage of the money generated through taxation had to be put aside.
Yes.
And that money would be put aside for abatements.
Yep.
So...
And exemptions.
And exemptions. Okay, so, so this account takes care of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, at one point, if we have a windfall, and those monies are not given back, you know...
Those are one-time, those are one-time monies?
One-time money.
Cash or stabilization account?
Stabilization. We would never recommend that they go to a budget to supplement ongoing expenses. It's a basic...
I know you want its best practices.
Right. It's a basic, it's Finance 101, Management 101.
I'm not going to challenge you on it. I appreciate where you're coming.
Just one last thing, and I think we've taken up our two hours here. And I appreciate, this is, listen, one thing we've learned, taxation is not easily explained, just like assessment, assessments, none of this is easily, we tried to sort of break it down for our customers, to make it as understandable and as easy as it can, but it's somewhat complicated. Let me remind you, next year, we're going to be going out to bond for our police station. And be mindful of the decisions that you make this year, because that will affect the cost, and that will affect our bond rating when we go out for permanent borrowing. The decisions we make this year will be obvious to borrowers, to the lenders next year, and also to Moody's. And that's all I'm going to say, because, you know, the plan is to move forward with the police station. That's going to have an effect.
Consul, Michelle, Flozefra?
Yeah, one quick question for John. John, I had asked, I don't know if you got this request yet, but through the clerk's office, for a list of the, all revenue sources, including all those, and including revolving accounts?
I didn't get that, but...
Yeah. Can I have that for tomorrow?
Well, that's part of the annual report, but, yeah, there's no problem.
Including the revolving accounts?
Revolving accounts, as far as what?
As far as money in, money out.
Sure. It's part of the annual report, it's on the webpage.
Okay, well, this, I mean, up to date, you know, for this current fiscal year would be helpful, even though it's not closed out.
Yeah, it's not closed out.
Okay, but that would be helpful.
Yeah.
I understand that. The one that's most recently published is Fiscal 15, right, for annual...
The Audit Report. No, the Audit, 16 is, 16's on, 16's on the webpage, and 17 hasn't closed yet.
Okay. So you'll get me those, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and your team?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, yes.
I'm off my legs. So, good stretch. Beloved Library Director, present a budget overview for us.
Okay. Good evening. First, I'd like to introduce you to the two people that are at the table with me. It's the library's Assistant Director, Edward Bergman, is right to my right. And right after Edward is one of the library trustees, Lawrence Enfor, and we did have two other trustees here, but they had to leave. The library's proposed FY '18 budget is $1,464,819. That represents a 3.5 percent increase over fiscal 2017. The personnel budget, which is a little over a million dollars, a million 66,394 to be specific, includes step increases, longevity, and the approved cost of living adjustment. This is the last year of a three-year cost of living adjustment that was approved by the city council. In the past, you may remember, we've asked for an additional full-time position, it was an electronic services librarian's position. But the Board of Trustees and I decided that this year, we would not request an additional full-time position. We have just undergone a strategic planning process, which has taken us about 18 months. It has included a lot of input, community input, and it is now before the Board of Trustees for review, before it will be voted on and then submitted to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. Given that strategic planning document and my upcoming retirement, we thought that it would be best to hold any requests for additional staffing until next fiscal year. So the new director will have an opportunity to work with the Board of Trustees on reviewing the strategic plan and the direction of the library for the next five years, and then make decisions about what staffing would be required to allow the library to fulfill its goals in that strategic plan. The operating budgets request is $398,425. It is a $7,400 increase over the previous fiscal year, the most significant increase. There's a few small line item increases, including water because there's an increase in water and sewer rates. The largest increase is $7,000 for automation. There are a variety of things that come out of that line item, including, the, the most significant is our membership to the CWMARS Network, which is the Central Western Massachusetts Automated Resource Sharing Network, which puts us in a consortium with other libraries in Central and Western Massachusetts. So that's a snapshot of the library's budget, and I would be happy to answer any more specific questions.
All right, well, I'll open it up to the Finance Committee first. Does Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, do you have any questions?
I don't, I don't. I just want to say thank you very much, and just want to make note that this is your last budget defense, and we will miss you very, very much, Susan.
Thank you. It is my 33rd, just to let you all know, besides my being last.
I'll ask Counselor Marshian.
If I may, I'll echo the same comments, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Couple of questions specific. Regarding the regional partnership that you kind of fell into with the closing or the limit of ours and other communities' libraries that were available, where do we stand right now as far as membership to the Lemmister Library on a regional basis? Are we locked in now to mostly the people of Lemmister, or is this more of a regional thing?
I think the, our library serves a lot of residents from the surrounding communities. I think our non-resident borrowing runs about 20 percent of our overall borrowing. When we look at the number of library patrons we have, that's driven by ZIP code, so we know that a little over 20, somewhere between 24 and 25,000 people who are Lemmister residents have library cards that they've used in the last two years. Because what happens is the database is purged every two, every year for people who haven't used their library card actively in several years. So, does that answer your question, Counselor?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's good, thank you. The other part is an LHS partnership that you formed a couple of years ago. Lemmister High School was in a situation where they basically did not have the services available for the students, and part of the resolve was to actually join the local library family, and, and what's happened with that since?
The school department, in particular, the high school, the principal sends out information at the beginning of the school year encouraging students to get a public library card. We waive the fee for a library card if a student had one and has lost it and needs to get a new card. The advantage to that is then that gives them access to all the online databases that the library has to offer. The school department lost access to the state databases because they don't have a certified media specialist at the high school. So this was, this was a way that the library could work with the school department to give those students access to a large variety of online databases that will help them with their school assignments.
Okay, I, I respect the fact that the strategic plan is something for the next generation, it's going to be coming in, the new vision, but at the same time, where are you right now with your technology? Are you where you need to be, or are we behind?
I think we can always improve on the technology. One of the things we did this year is we upgraded the Wi-Fi in the building, so we actually have a mesh, mesh network now so that you can be working on the laptop, laptop in the old building and start to walk to another part of the building and not lose your connectivity. And it's much, much stronger signal now, and the upload and download rates are greater. So I think that was a big improvement. We were having a lot of problems with our Wi-Fi before, and that was actually impacting our volunteer income tax assistance program, so we had to get it upgraded before that program started for this tax, this past tax season. I think that we're going to be looking at, we have about 22 computers that are public computers, and I think that we're going to be looking at having to replace those, and we're going to have to look at what is the most cost-effective way to do that.
Okay.
I think some of the biggest challenges for us are the staff time involved with public computers that have to be locked down with a, a security program called Deep Freeze, and so we're not able to have a technology company push out the updates and patches to those computers, and so that requires a lot of staff time to disable the security software and do the update. So those are the, some of the challenges we're facing, and just delivering more services electronically are some of the things we have to look at.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does any other Counselor have any question? Counselor Tombrowski?
I just, I'm going to miss you, Susan.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
They should always build you up because your books are late.
In the, in the interest of full disclosure, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr is a library trustee, and I am the chairman of the board and a library trustees, and I would also echo that thank you from the bottom of our heart for your 33 years of service. You have created a wonderful institution here in Lemmister that we're all proud of, and we're going to miss you a lot.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the support you have given as counselors to the library, it's greatly appreciated.
You've made it easy, Susan. You know, I mean, it's the easiest, really, the easiest budget defense, you know, Susan would come down and say, okay, you know, no problem, so, no, with your detail and, you know, the trust that, you know, the financial team has in you, it's just, you've made it very easy for us.
Wow.
So, thank you.
I really appreciate the confidence you've had in my leadership. I get to work with wonderful people, the trustees, the staff, who are amazing and do really hard work, the great friends of the library organization, and all our volunteers. It's easy to look good when you have so many other people carrying a lot of the work, so thank you.
And the Recreation Department thanks you too, because they're next. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. yourself and your staff.
Hi, Judith Sumner, Director of Recreation, and to my right is Anne Marie Sargent, she's our program coordinator, and Jeff O'Neill is our Rec Commissioner and Vice Chairman of the Commission, and Sunny Lionel Shop and Tier is a longtime Recreation Commissioner and former Chair of the Commission, and to my left is Lisa Como, she is our Administrative The Recreation Department's really fortunate to have such a supportive group of commissioners and staff, and, you know, it's wonderful people, and people in the community also, and we have a number of volunteers, over 100 volunteers that help our department, so, you know, I'm really thankful for all the help and support that everyone gives us in this community. We're pleased with our budget, and we want to thank the mayor and the city councilors and, you know, the Rec Commissioners and all the staff for all their support. The, we had asked for some increases in our budget, we had increases in our number of our participants in our programs, we had, we have over 5,000 people that are in our database system now that have been registering for our programs. We had 3,858 participants that were enrolled in our full-day summer program, that's, that's, so we had 2,000 participants with 300 to 360 children per week in our program. So we're like a school, so, you know, on a given day, there could be 360 children just in our programs, just, that's just the full-day summer program. We also have programs that are instructional programs as well, there's a listing of them on, on my budget summary of all our different programs and activities that we did in 2016, and then our brochures also list all the programs and activities. We also do the enrichment programs as well. We, our office is extremely busy with, you know, participants coming and going, you know, people registering. We're very fortunate, we have the database system now that takes care of a lot of people that can register now from their home, you know, on the weekends and nights, but some people still want, you know, need to come into the office, you know, for help and support and, you know, signing up for programs through that program. We employ over 100 people throughout the course of a year, so, and most of them are, you know, minimum wage or, you know, a little above minimum wage. We employ, you know, numerous part-time people, you know, seasonal people, and that's a tremendous amount of work in personnel for us to manage. We have to, you know, have them fill out a 25 pages of employment packet that they have to fill out, we have to train them, they have to do CPR for a stay, we have to double-check to make sure they're, let us some recommendations are in, we have to interview them. It's, it's a lot of work, you know, but, you know, the staff are great, you know, Lisa and Anne Marie and all the other staff are wonderful with helping with all of that, but it's, can be really hectic and crazy in our office, and we've asked the mayor, you know, is there any way we can get a full-time, year-round person, you know, to help out with some of this throughout the course of the year, and he said, well, you'll have to just, because of the benefit package, you'll just have to try and make do with just part-time people. So we're, we're working with part-time people to help with, offset some of the, you know, increase in the demand and the load of programs and activities. The same with maintenance. We could really use another, you know, he told the mayor, we could really use another full-time maintenance person in our department, but, you know, he said, we'll have to just work with seasonal people or part-time people. So what we do, since we don't have anyone that is a, has a CDL license, or if any work needs to be done with equipment, we pay the overtime for the DPW to come after hours to help us out. So we paid over $7,000 of money for the DPW to help us with, you know, anything that we needed, that needed equipment. So, in, looking at my budget, the reason we needed an increase in our salaries was that the cost, the minimum wage went up by a dollar an hour, so that in... And also with that replacement, the Charmette family did give us $500, so we also get donations that help us out. Also too, sometimes sponsorships come forward. Also too, we have, we are now putting portable toilets in all of our facilities, so that's an increased cost that we have to manage within our budget.
Okay.
Anne Marie, do you have anything you wanted to say, everybody?
I'll open up the questions. Counselor Shalafu Zephyr, you have a question?
Thanks, no, I do. Judy, you generate a lot of money in program, like in your revolving account, right? So, but I did notice in your line item budget for salaries, you do include the cost of the part-time summer help, is that right? Or is this?
Well, the, the revolving fund, the fees that we collect, we paid $50,000 out of that for salaries, from the fees that we collected. So this doesn't fully fund all the staff.
Okay. That was one of my questions.
And then same with, this doesn't fund, you know, all the program expenses, you know, bus transportation, supplies, things of that nature, anything else that we need is also funded out of that revolving fund.
Yep.
So we paid over, if you look at the, on my annual report, I believe it was 280...
1,000.
Yes, well, minus the salaries, oh, the salaries were 56,000. Minus the salaries, it was 232,000 of just expenses that we paid out of the revolving account. So that helps to supplement the budget. So, you know, it'd be ideal to just get the fully funded budget and not have to try and raise fees and have everything free, but we, we kept our costs for our full-day summer program at $65 per week with the $5 for nine to five, Monday through Friday, and so we did it like an à la carte. So if you needed extra care earlier in the morning or later in the afternoon, it was $5 for the care extended in the morning each day, or $5 extra in the afternoon, or 10 a day if you needed both. So we did like an à la carte, but like I said, we had given out over $10,000 in reduced fees for people. So most of the people received a 60% reduced fee for their, for their, that requested it.
For their program? That was my next question, is I knew that you really did subsidize a lot of kids' programs, and that's really important, I think, you know, for a big part of our community. Two other things, one thing I saw that was really great, because we've talked about this, is you had an increase in park maintenance?
Yes.
Because you were doing a lot of maintenance all around town with no people, no money to do it.
Well, we were taking it out of our revolving account, of the program fees.
Okay.
Constantly, and so it's really not fair to the kids who hold back on different things you'd like to do with the children because you need it for maintenance, because they were, it just wasn't in the budget, and some things weren't large enough to come for a whole capital expenditure. So to have that is really helpful.
I imagine it is, I was happy to see that. One other question, looking at the current year-to-date budget report, recreation capital outlay, there was a $92,000 transfer, and there's $87,705 left. Is that, what is that for, do you know? Capital outlay?
Oh, oh, that one was for the tennis court repairs, there's cracks on the tennis courts, so we need to have those repaired. So we had, at one time, obtained quotes for those, and then it was more money than it was, so Greg was going to put that out to rebid for that. So we're hoping to get all the cracks in the tennis courts repaired, but we also, but in that cost is not the cost for the Doyle Field tennis courts, 'cause that's another 32,000, 'cause the tennis courts at Doyle Field now are starting to crack, and they need to be repainted. So we wanna try and stay ahead of that, if at all possible, to be able to repair those. And the skate park also has large cracks that we need to start addressing. And also in terms of, you know, capital improvements that we need, the light poles at Fornia Park are, are really in a dangerous situation. Two of the light poles have piliated woodpeckers that have been making homes in them, and you can, and Joe Poria can put his fist inside the holes of the poles that are holding the lights up. So he said the Band-Aid approach would be $9,000 a pole to replace a wooden pole, but it's only a Band-Aid approach. We had submitted a request for 170,000 for, to put in mus, you know, aluminum poles with state-of-the-art lights from Musco Lighting, and so Wendy, for the last two years, has submitted requests for grant funding to help pay for those lightings, and we haven't, that has been denied, so we hadn't received the funding. So desperately need some funds for that, I discussed that with the mayor and John, so, you know, maybe not, you know, this fiscal year, but it needs to be done as soon as possible, because that is a, you know, is a liability for the city. And another concern that, you know, I've been addressing with the mayor every year is the dam at Barrett Park. You know, we had another phase-one dam inspection done, and that cost $4,000, and every year we're paying, you know, close to $4,000 just to come in to have an engineer look at that and tell us that it needs to be repaired. So that's, that is anywhere between 700 to 900,000 to have that dam repaired. So in, the, the report said that there's potential loss of life, and that the dam is in poor condition. So that's a concern. I mean, that's something that needs to come out of the city's budget, and sometimes soon, and the mayor's aware of that, and John, so they, you know, so we're hoping that that would be either, either this, you know, fiscal year coming up with any, you know, free cash money that's available. But those are, those are like the immediate things. I mean, also, we'd love to have, you know, a tractor, right? You know, tractor that we can mow with, but we have to, you know, borrow things from the DPW sometimes, or if there's CDL, we have to hire them to help us with that.
All right, thanks, thank you.
Counselor Marshall?
One thing I forgot too, also, we have a lot of fencing repairs, so that's a high-ticket item too, is, you know, in the parks.
Is that in your budget anywhere? Do you have the cost of that fencing?
Well, that, that would be absorbed in my, in my, you know, normal maintenance budget. So by having that increase, this year, we had to replace the fence about three times at the Third Street Playground because of vandalism, and we would like to have, you know, security cameras put up there, but the cost is about $4,000 for the camera, plus we'd have to monitor it as well. So that's something that we're looking at, and we're hoping to get some, you know, something in our budget, you know, or to utilize if we have any money left towards the end of our fiscal budget, we, you know, save it in case there's any emergencies to maybe look at getting security cameras.
And I think the last time we spoke, you didn't have anybody really to repair things at the splash parks. I think that was you, wasn't it? Right, are you still do, I know it was Sunny. So are you still doing that, or does this budget include any kind of stipend for?
No, I still do it with JR.
You're still doing it with JR? Okay.
In fact, I forgot to call him. I was supposed to meet him.
Yeah, but presently, right now...
Can I?
Yeah, right now, we're having some issues. There's something mechanical wrong. We can't figure it out what is wrong, why, that it won't shut off. So it has to be run, not, you know, just constantly, but it's a recirculating system, so it's not money, you know, it's not water going down the drain, so it goes into a hole that takes, it's like a pool. So it has chlorine, and muregard acid in it, and it, so we're working on that, and someone vandalized the Third Street Playground water splash, they broke into the building and damaged the control panel, so, you know, Joe Poria, hopefully, will be able to look at that for us tomorrow. So there's maintenance things that we have, so it would be nice to have somebody that's, you know, real technically skilled to have, but we're very fortunate to have the resource of other departments that help us out all the time. And also too, you know, Anne Marie, I don't know if she, people are probably asking you about the pool. I mean, that's a major, you know, major amount of work in our department to have, manage all of that, and Anne Marie works with that, and she's also a principal, so we're very fortunate to have her train our staff and to oversee the children, and she is skilled in all of that. So do you wanna mention something about the pool? We're hoping, we're hoping it'll be up. Okay, yeah, I know. We're hoping that it'll be up and running next week.
Good, thank you.
What's that? Counselor Marshall? I think this is my 20th budget year, and I have never seen a board in this city who has worked together the way that you do. It's amazing.
We're fortunate.
It really is. And it's been that way for a long time, but, you know, your budget is really a bare-bones budget, and, you know, the mayor, I think, has probably so much confidence in the tremendous volunteerism of your, your team, that sometimes that comes back to bite you. When you came up with 162,000-plus increase, I'm sure it was very well-qualified, and the mayor, you know, having to be fair across the board to the other city departments, only came up with a little over $30,000 to help you out. How are you gonna be able to manage those initiatives in the budget that you identified in the budget? You, we have a city where the demographics have, has changed, and it's not getting, it's not going in a direction where you have more payers than the kids that are being free and reduced. So as far as your operational expenses, the money that you can generate through your programming is probably insignificant in the big picture, and you don't wanna be overcharging kids to end up paying for security systems.
Right.
And families, because then what happens is they don't end up participating, and that's the worst thing we could do as a community. Recreation should be free for everyone, unfortunately, it's not.
Well, that's why we, we decided, let's not increase the fee. You know, I know a lot of other communities say, "Oh, that's really low," you know, you know, you're very fortunate, you know, to have money in the budget that helps to support, you know, the salaries that we need for that.
Right, right. So what's the plan to make up the difference?
Grants.
Grants? Who's writing the grants, you?
I think she works with Wendy on that.
Well, with Wendy on that, to see if there's any grants on that.
Okay, so that's how that plays out? Okay. How about business partners? Do you have any big business partners that are helping out?
I don't at this time.
Yeah, okay.
No, it would be wonderful if we did.
So a little solicitation while we're in session here in this hearing. The other part too is, you know, we, we hear about, you know, the, the city charging back a tremendous amount of money to the school department. You really should be charging back to the city for all the work that you do, it's amazing. We know, if you had trouble with, for example, the height of grass, not, fields not being mowed on, on school property, or just city property in general, you guys have really stepped up to help out with that.
Thank you.
So it's great to have all these playgrounds, we need more of them, you know, but at the same time, the maintenance of effort has to be tremendous on your part to keep up with the demand of just the rubbish barrels, never mind the mowing of the grass.
Well, plus too, in the springtime, all these groups need picnic tables here and there, where they, where they maintain all the picnic tables and bring them everywhere, so that's a, you know, tremendous amount of work as well.
The other program offerings throughout the community, we have the Boys and Girls Club, we have some private organizations, like a Taekwondo Club, for example, maybe some religious affiliates that also provide programming for children. How does that impact your participation?
Well, at, at one time, when, you know, the school department had summer school, and then they had their own programs, you know, and then they created choices, our numbers did go down, but our, we kept our prices low, so that, our numbers started going back up again. So it, the other programs cost more than ours. It really, it impacted at first, but it hasn't anymore. I mean, we, we are turning people away now, we're telling people, "You need to register as soon as possible, because once those slots are filled, they're filled," and we are the, we are the childcare for the working families. They, they rely on us.
Right.
Parents that are working need to have their children somewhere that they know they're safe, and that they're well-cared-for, and that they have a fun summer, so that's, that's our mission, is to make sure that the children are safe, and...
Okay. Can we shift over to the state pool for a second?
Sure.
How's that going, and is that a real burden financially to the department?
Honestly, no. It is a lot of work, I'm not gonna lie, especially getting ready. We're, we're a little behind schedule, but not us personally. We are in the process of being rehabbed, so we have a brand-new shell, the deep end is gone. It's absolutely beautiful, but the plumbing is not done, so we have no running water. It's today's Tuesday, we're opening Saturday.
Saturday.
So between JR and myself, and a very wonderful group of kids that worked for us this summer, we've been there 10 hours a day trying to get it ready, and I am, I was promised this morning that we will open on Saturday, but I'm gonna say Monday, we will be up and running.
Okay. We'll pray for rain for Saturday.
And poor Anne Marie, she was planning on taking a vacation this week before the summer program started, but because of the pool, she's very dedicated to that. She is staying home.
Now Jeff, you took over the basketball clinic.
Right, we still run the Mark Osowski camp, okay, that's a 75...
Can you tell everyone Mark Osowski, who he was, please?
Yes.
For the people who are new to the community.
And last year, we had 100 kids, and we don't turn anybody away. Again, people come, if they can't pay, they sit down and talk with Judy, or, you know, Lisa, and they'll pay maybe a portion of it. We have a certified athletic trainer onboard. Our staff is wonderful, we have men returning counselors every year, and kids are getting medals at the end, and we've gotten really great response from it. So we wanna continue that. Your Susky family helps us plan it, they're really involved, and it's, it's a great thing for kids, you know.
Thank you.
Mark was a native Lemonster. He used to work at the rec department way back when we were about the same age, and we started way back about 30 years ago, and he was doing camps then, but then he went on to coach at the, in the NBA, and he'd come back every summer. It was a commitment he made to the city of Lemonster. So after his passing, we talked with the family, and we have kept it going in his honor. And Jeff's right, his nieces come back every year, and so does his brother and his wife. I mean, they're just amazing.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Good job. Thank you so much for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I have a question, sorry.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry.
Probably don't wanna hear my question, but I would ask it anyway, 'cause I was actually just looking at your minutes of June 16th, and it kinda falls in with Anne Marie was just talking about the kids that you felt working really hard to get things done. I'm assuming that's who you're referring to in this 25 cents an hour raise? But you're talking about having this big discussion on your board about someone else that works with the department that is looking for a 50 cent increase in salary, who doesn't have a license, because they lost their license, or somebody else has to drive her around to do the flowers downtown, and then disrespected you by, by, by the minutes that are in here. So all these things add up, but then you give her a 50 cent raise when, when Anne Marie's talking about only giving 25 cents to the other kids? How do you justify doing something like that with, with other staff members?
Well, we had put it out and advertised the position, and we didn't have anyone that was qualified for the position, and...
And plant flowers?
That had any experience planting and weeding, and, you know, and being able to drive a truck as well.
But she didn't have a license to drive a truck.
Right, yep, yes. So anyways, well, that, that was what we were looking for when we put that out, when we put that out. So we didn't have anyone that applied that had those skills that would replace the person that we had hired, and the person we had hired was offered jobs by other, other businesses. So in order to work with people's weaknesses and strengths, so I try and work with people's weaknesses to improve them, and try and, anyone who has, work with their strengths and build on that, and fill in with others where their weaknesses are. So I, you know... So all these things add up, but then you give her a 50 cent raise when, when Anne Marie's talking about only giving 25 cents to the other kids? How do you justify doing something like that with, with other staff members?
Well, we had put it out, um, and advertised the position and we didn't have anyone that was qualified for the position and...
And plant flowers?
That had any experience planting and weeding and, you know, and being able to drive a truck as well.
But she didn't have a license to drive a truck.
Right. Yep, yes. So anyways, well, that, that was what we were looking for when we put that out, when we put that out. So we didn't have anyone that applied that had those skills that would replace the person that, um, we had hired and the person we had hired was offered jobs by other, other, um, businesses. So in order to, um, work with people's weaknesses and strengths. So I try and work with people's weaknesses to improve them and, um, try and, anyone who has, work with their strengths and build on that and fill in with others, um, where their weaknesses are. So I, you know, decided to...
I'm not against...
I did not want to lose the person that had been doing it for the last, you know, for the last two years. So, um, and then, like I said, there was no other applicants that were qualified for that position.
And she does a hell of a job besides...
I'm sorry?
She does one hell of a job.
Oh, I, I don't think anybody can take away from the fact that it was beautiful.
She's worked every night while giving up.
But, but you are talking about an employee, you know, that, that hasn't had a license for what, two years or a year? So has taken other staff members away from you to drive her around from what these minutes are saying.
I think she's in the process of getting a license.
You know, and then, and then had an issue with disrespect in the office because she wanted more money or whatever the reason was. And, and Marie's giving raises of 25 cents to kids she just said are working hard to get things done for the, for the kids to be able to work the pool. And out of all the negatives against this one person, she gets a 50 cent an hour raise. So I guess it just didn't make sense to me reading that. How do you justify that?
We would have lost her.
How is morale hold up?
We would have lost her. We would have lost her. She would have gone someplace else.
That, that person is extremely, extremely hard worker and...
I can't, I can't tell you how hard she works. I couldn't even...
So, I mean, all my other staff that work with her say that she doesn't, she's nonstop and works constantly.
That's her only job is to do flowers, right? That's the only thing she does?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I actually, when, sometimes we've had other maintenance, um, if, you know, if it was a rainy day or things of that nature and there's not a lot of watering, she's helped with weed whacking, you know, in the fall, raking, things of that nature. So there's other maintenance duties also in that job description as well.
I mean, I'm not speaking directly against her, but just for a, a litany of minutes...
It was a decision we had to make.
I'll tell you why.
Excuse me?
Because we didn't want to lose her.
All right.
Any other questions?
I just have, um, I just want to say, I mean, my, my oldest son is six, four, and I remember going, I remember him did put that, tried to find this brochure because it was so poor. He had, yeah, as a working mother. And I don't remember it being much more expensive than that. I mean, it was 45 bucks. But all three of my sons went there, one of them worked there.
Yes, yep.
And I really appreciate that program in particular and also everything that you do. I don't know how you get it done. I've been down there and I know it's good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. What's that? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure. Where's the ceiling? Good evening, Chief Sidlal.
Hi.
Up next, the fire department.
Um, give you a quick rundown, how we still have the three stations, um, same complement of personnel. We man the staff to the three engines, one at each station, a ladder downtown, the two ambulances, deputy chief dispatch. Uh, we handle about 7,600 total emergencies a year. Out of that, around 5,300 REMS and out of the 5,300, we transport about 4,200 patients to the hospital. Uh, we have a breakdown of 66% of those are BLS transport and then, um, 1,300, 33% are ALS transports. And the reason that I tell you that is that I sent a letter to the mayor, um, before the budget, uh, my meeting with him. I sent the letter on, uh, May 9th. It was just a brief breakdown. It gave, um, as he prepared for his budget, that, um, I was looking to maintain the staffing, one chief, five deputies, 18 lieutenants. I asked for 60 firefighters. I currently have 56 and what I wanted to do was bring on four and absorb it through reduction in overtime cost. So it really wouldn't have cost the city much more money, but, um, it would have given me four more members to my department. Um, there's some times during the summer that it's difficult to hire overtime and, um, this year in particular and right now, we've had a lot of injuries and illnesses where, um, I'm, I'm down 10 bodies right now and I have to fill on overtime. So that was one of the additions to the budget. And then I also asked for, but I didn't put a, put it in the line item was, I'd like to raise the ambulance rates, um, from Medicare plus 150% to Medicare to 200%. That would generate $94,000 and what I would like to do with that is to add one full-time paramedic and that person would run the day-to-day ambulance operation, review the reports, um, order supplies, meet with the hospital staff. And then the main, the, the goal would be for that person to get us into the ALS service. Um, and the reason I mention that is MedStar Ambulance, our ALS provider, is right now they're having a shortage of medics. So we have a nine percent of our, nine percent of the time that we, we have to transport ALS, they don't have a medic available for us. It comes out to about 120 times a year, but those are sick people that need advanced medical care, 120 times a year that they are not available. So I know I stood here before in, uh, Council of Frida, why I go to ALS and at the time I said it was a big undertaking and everything. Um, the climate's changed a little. The, uh, there's less paramedics in the area. So that person that I wanted to hire was to start the program. So maybe in a year or two or three, we could get our service up to the ALS level. That wasn't contained in the budget, but it was contained in the letter. Um, and the other things that weren't in the, in the, um, the budget that you saw was we were looking and working with the mayor for a storage building, uh, behind Station Two. So in lieu of coming before the council and proposing a multimillion dollar new fire station, a fix maybe for the next 10, 20 years would to be to build a $500,000 storage building behind Station Two. It would help with our needs for the storage of the apparatus, backup apparatus, and then would get us through the building of a police station and then, um, on. When I met with the mayor, um, you know, you explained that we wouldn't get the four firefighters, did consider the other proposals, um, and I, my report to him was that all of the, um, the buildings are all in good shape, new roof at headquarters, floor, Station Two was renovated, uh, under Chief LeBlanc 10, 15 years ago. Um, headquarters needs to be repointed. I might have to get a small appropriation and do some emergency brickwork and the rear deck at headquarters needs to be replaced. I was holding off on that because if I could build the storage, I could eliminate the rear deck and just fill in the, the area. But if I don't get the building, I need to bring the apparatus in and out. Um, so that, that was the meeting I had with him and those were the requests. I did get more funding in overtime, 100,000, which was on his slide, and I did get more money in vehicle maintenance. Um, maintaining fire trucks is very expensive, tires, uh, batteries, parts, very, very expensive. So, um, with the budget that, that I have, I'll be able to maintain the level of service that we have been maintaining for the last 10, uh, well, since we had the second ambulance, so for the last two and a half years, um, everything is good. We've gotten some new dispatch equipment that the council funded earlier this spring. I have before you two pickup trucks that, um, if there's any questions on what those will be used for, I can elaborate. Um, I know it's been a long night, that's why I'm rushing. Um, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay, I will go to the clerk of finance first.
Um, I, I don't, we haven't seen that letter that you outlined all of your budget requests.
Uh, no, I can give a copy to the...
Yeah, would you please to the clerk and then she'll give one to all of us?
Yeah.
That would be really helpful.
Yeah.
So, am I correct in that everything you asked for, you didn't get, except for 100,000 dollars in overtime for the second ambulance and some maintenance money?
No, everything we requested, we got.
Oh.
You know, all my 56 firefighters and, right, regular budget.
The regular budget, right, right.
But I, but my additional request from the previous budgets was four additional firefighters.
Correct.
And I wanted to fund it partly through reduction in overtime.
Right.
And that, that, and then I requested some line items in, in, um, in my, uh, what do you call it? The, the, to fix things and my maintenance.
Your maintenance line, right.
Lines, lines. And he funded vehicle maintenance a little more.
Okay.
And office, uh, things. I, I didn't, I didn't request the funding for the EMS person. What I wanted to propose was going before the council to raise the rates.
An increase in rates.
And then use that money, so it's not a budget request.
Okay. Right. So we'll handle that separately outside the budget.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you know, it's...
Yeah. Um, so my first question is about the 100,000 in overtime because I thought the second ambulance, the intent was to get that to be self-sustaining.
It, it is, is self-sustaining.
Okay.
Um, I'm funded, this year I've funded 1,250, FY 18.
1.2 million.
Yep. Um, this, this year and last year, I've spent about 1.5 million.
Okay.
Projected ambulance receipts i- in two weeks. So it's a pretty good projection because I have all the money. I will bring in 1,835,929.
For both ambulances?
Both ambulance and the Medicare reimbursement that we're bringing. I look at it as I can either pay for the bottom 16 members of my department, which what it takes to run the ambulance through the year. And if you use a John Richards figure, which is OPEB and everything, that's about 100 grand per person. That gives me, um, you know, 235,000 dollars for expenses.
Mm-hmm.
And all we spend is about 60 or 70 a year and then we come before the council every so many years for a quarter of a million dollar ambulance. Or we can take that money and it, it completely pays for the 1.5 million dollars in overtime and then the rest is used towards expensive. It, that's how you want to split it up.
Okay.
Um, but it definitely, it definitely pays for itself and then some and that's with a, a rate of Medicare plus 150, which is much, much lower than privates. And the council gives me the ability to abate people that can't pay where you lose that with privates. And I say it every year, we have a tremendous group of guys that provide a tremendous service. Very proud of them.
Mm-hmm. A couple of quick questions too on the, um, the year-to-date budget report. There's a line item, fire capital, uh, which was, it looks like you've got $25,000 left in that to spend, 25, 463. And then there's another line item, fire capital outlay prior, which has 274,000 left to spend.
Yeah, that's the new fire truck that's coming. We had 600,000 dollars in that one.
Mm-hmm.
And the, um, we, we did a prepayment once the chassis is built. So we paid the 300 and something thousand dollars. And then when the truck is delivered in September, that will be paid off. So what happens with, it takes two to three years, two years to get a fire truck. So I get the money. I got the money last June.
Yep.
I have to encumber it this year and I have to encumber 200 something next year. I believe the 24,000, actually I know it is, that's for the design work for the back deck. And I didn't spend it this year because I was gambling on getting another building, but that's why we'll encumber it and use that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, Marsha?
The, um, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Financial impact on the opiate crisis. I don't see any line items in here dealing with Narcan.
Yep.
Um, or also, um, if you have any kind of a, if you can identify on the 7,600 calls that you actually have, uh, how many of them ballpark would be dedicated to not only the opiate crisis, but other substance abuse as well?
Yep.
And, you know, how does that overtax, um, your system?
Yeah. Financial impact as far as the Narcan that we administer, um, the Narcan was 25 dollars per dose, which we absorbed the first few years. Then the state has given a grant the next two years. Um, the first grant was actually paid for Narcan plus bought the city six defibrillators, three for the fire and three for the police. So financially, the, the dosage of Narcan hasn't impacted us much yet. Um, it, we're in tear in the service. Uh, we do get a fair share of amounts. When we run the numbers, you know, we'll end up with 18, one month, 30 the next. But, and that, that's misleading because if the police officer delivers Narcan prior to our arrival, it doesn't show up on our numbers. If the family member delivers Narcan prior to our numbers, it doesn't show up on our num, on our, if the family does, it doesn't show up on our numbers. Um, the opiate crisis, abuse and mental health is a big issue in Leominster. I'm sure that the school department, the rec department, I know the police, um, it's a, a majority of our runs are related to whether it's opiate, alcohol, homeless, um, mental health in, in, you know, what we consider just the average family that, uh, we go on a lot of calls that, um, we, we, we see a lot. Emotional take, uh, impact is, I talk to a lot of the middle-aged guys and older guys, they're saying, I'm interested in concern, more than interested, concern what's going to happen to our workforce, fire police teachers down the road because we were never exposed to the death, um, of young people like we are now. So the young police officers and the young firefighters, they go on these calls and it's a 20-year-old young girl that overdosed and has been dead for an hour or two is, that's going to wear in tear and there's going to be issues down the road, um, I think. I'm concerned about it, that, you know, a lot of these employees. Um, I, the police chief is here.
Yeah.
The police officers, they do an awesome job, uh, first responders, my guys. I, I can't say enough, I'm very proud, um, to come to work every day as, as part of this city and to know the fire service that we provide and police service. Um, it, we don't have a lot of advocates sometimes because budgets get, take away from that, but we got a good, we got a real good group of, uh, first responders in the city of Leominster.
Great. I'm very, very pleased that our state representative is here tonight.
Yes.
And just, you know, whatever she can do from her seat, I'm sure she will to help us with this matter.
Yeah, she's been over many times and talked and everything and I think we're lucky to have her.
That's great. Thank you. The other question I have is mutual aid. Does that sound a balance out? At one point, we became the public safety service for, in a budding community that was lacking.
Yeah.
So where are we right now with mutual aid?
It, 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 it's okay. We still going to go to Fitchburg more than they come to us. I think it's the nature of the beast, they're a poor community. Um, we have some in agreements, uh, in place, which one we use this Sunday, Father's Day is they have a fire. So we send our ladder to the line and we cover both communities. Uh, but we're actually on our ALS service is we're actually reaching out to the Stirlings and asking them to come to help us and more than we're help, helping them. So it's, it's almost like Fitchburg needs more because they're poorer and then we, we get busy with the ALS and the ambulances because we're a commercial community industry. So we have a lot of vehicle accidents and drug overdoses in the parking lots. So now we're starting to ask them to come in more. So, um, but, but we, it, it's still at the same level council as it's been for the last 10 years or so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's not, it's not a concern of mine that we're going too much. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The other council, Council Frida?
What's your feeling on the, I know we talked about this before, um, anticipating your budget with ambulances if the pay-as-you-go happens to have any effect?
We, we just, we re, uh, we had our billing company run the numbers for those and we were looking at, we bring in 1.8 million dollars. Uh, Medicare reimbursement this year was 165, so it was like 1.6 million and we figured we'd lose over 500,000 dollars, um, i- if the state senate in the, um, in the house and the governor don't, uh, provide the right language to make sure municipalities get the money. in the house and the governor don't, uh, provide the right language to make sure municipalities get the money back. There's a big, big concern with the fire chiefs in Massachusetts. Because a lot of the fire departments, the Sterling types in, in that, those smaller ones, that without that ambulance revenue, they lose their daytime, daytime fire personnel. So we actually, uh, wrote a letter to the MMA.
Yeah, I know. You're on, you're on record as being supportive.
And, um, when the MMA came into Lemonster that day, talked at length with the, the gentleman. And, um, I get, it's the first time ever, or one of the first times that the MMA, the fire chiefs, the unions and the, and the mayors and elected officials are all.
First of my twenty-two years of, of involvement, yeah.
So it's, it's, it's at the state house level, um, we've all got our fingers crossed. But it, but if it happened, um, worst case, you know, what they're projecting is we would lose about five hundred thousand dollars. So, um, I don't know what would happen. In private is, some of those people that would get paid wouldn't pay private either. So I don't know if private just wouldn't pick up certain people once they knew it. So it, you know, it falls on us.
Just to fill in the counselors that don't know what it is. It's, um, pay-as-you-go, there's a proposal for the, by, fought by insurance companies. They want to be able to pay the individual that, that goes, rather than pay the fire department directly. So if they didn't pay the bill after, fire department would have to be chasing people down to get their money.
Yeah, and where it's happened is the people that get the paycheck, they actually call for the ambulance more often to make money.
Sure.
You know, that segment of the population. So, um, and we run the two ambulances and, you know, both of them do like twenty-five hundred, I mean, we do fifty-three hundred ambulance calls divided by two. So they're doing like twenty-six hundred ambulance calls a year. That's not fire calls. If we were to shut down one ambulance, we can't absorb it with just one because that would be too many runs. We used to do it by taking people off the fire truck. But we're just so busy now that the fire truck isn't in the station all the time to take the people off. So, uh, yeah, we, it, it might be a cost that the city would have to absorb, um, down the road. Or, or find an alternative, but.
We've done a great job with that ambulance.
Again, it, you know, started here at this, uh, you appropriating the money, the mayors always supported us, the firefighters.
You had to make it work though.
Yeah.
But you're wrong. It started with the trial. You guys proved it.
Yeah.
And you fought for that and you were right.
I like your memory. You've got a good memory.
You did a great job.
No, it was, yes, thank you.
Very diplomatic and it worked, just like you said it would.
Chief, have you kept track of the, the change in runs, in ambulance runs over the two and a half years you've had? I mean, now you're at fifty-three hundred. Do you know what that's up for?
Actually, this year, we're, we're, we're down about a hundred or so, um, and down some revenue compared to last year. And I honestly think it's because of the homeless shelter on North Main Street, four eighty-two North Main Street. When that was fully housed, I know it impacted the school with, I think they said a hundred kids. There was a lot of, um, children under school age living there. So that, I think, I think at one time, we figured it was over two hundred kids in that building.
Sure.
And they would use it as a primary care.
Okay.
Runny nose.
Yep.
They had no place else to turn. I don't blame them. They would call us, we would go. So, so our runs are down about a hundred on the EMS side and revenue's down. And I think it's because that, either that or it's just a natural fluctuation. But our runs have continually gone up, plateaued, maybe a little drop and continually, um, gone up since I've been on the fire department.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Councilor Corvus, very quiet tonight.
I can't talk about fire departments.
Oh.
Yeah, he can.
Telephone poles, fire departments.
Then, you were awful quiet the first two hours. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief. So we'll get a copy of that letter?
Oh, yes.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi.
Hi, Chief.
I don't really have presentations like last year. You heard the mayor say that he increased us to sixty from fifty-eight patrolmen. That's what I asked for. We certainly hope the council passes that. We desperately need the manpower. It's not just to, you know, to, um, perform the mission. But it's, it's a cushion in case you have some of the sudden losses that we had this year and that we're continuing to have. Because if you go, you run razor thin and, and two guys decide they don't want to be police officers anymore and two guys get hurt and go, you can't absorb the loss. You're immediately in a crisis position. So, you know, the sweet spot, I think, for the police department is probably sixty-two. But sixty will, will, you know, I consider that a home run if, again, if the council passes that. I consider that a home run for us. The budget, any increases in the budget really is essentially that in the two percent raise that's kicking in July first. There's been a little bit of increase in a couple of other areas because of the CBA, the contract with the, with the, uh, the two unions, patrol and supervisors. Other than that. I can't hear.
Catch that?
Did he say borrow for a police station?
He, he, yeah, he's talking about borrowing for a police station. I'm not involved in that conversation.
I just wondered if you got that.
We have had, uh, he and I have had substantive conversations over the last two years. We just had structural engineers go through the police department about, three weeks ago, we spent some money that had already been appropriated a couple of years ago and paid for HKT to hire structural engineers. There was a conversation about maybe going up a couple of floors or going out to the side. And they decided pretty quickly after four or five hours that that was not going to be appropriate. The, um, I haven't seen the full report. But the idea was to check the bones of the department to see if it could be stripped to the, to the studs and rebuilt and go up or go out towards the fire department or go above the three garages. And I don't think any of that's going to be, um, any of that's going to be possible. And, you know, if it happened, it happened. I, I wasn't overjoyed with it. But, um, I, I don't think any of that's going to be feasible. I think it's going to have to be find a piece of land and, and drop a police station. We do continue to renovate the police department as we speak. We're, we're, we're buying equipment and, and we're retrofitting our cells to, to more suicide prevention portions in there. If you come into the lobby, you know how horrible that bulletproof glass is where you can't see the officer in there and you can't talk to him and he can't, that's being replaced either Thurs, this Thursday or next Thursday with a more, um, customer-friendly glass. So we keep making changes.
Okay, Councilor Shalhoub-Zephyr?
Yep. Thank you very much. So with the two new police officers that are included in this budget, you'll be up to sixty?
When I fully get everybody through the academy, it'll be sixty patrolmen and fourteen supervisors, including myself. So it'll be seventy-four sworn.
And when do you think that'll be? I mean, how many have to go through the academy?
I have, um, three, five, I have eight in three different academies right now. And I have, I'm scheduled for three or four going in September. So to be perfectly blunt, you're probably looking at next year, but, but at this exact time, by time, by the time they get out and we put them through the FTO program to be fully staffed. And that's assuming that there aren't any unforeseen retirements. This, this was programmed to exactly coincide with the retirements that are coming up. So if, if nobody else, you know, leaves that we didn't know about, gets hurt, et cetera, et cetera, then I would think right around this time next year, maybe even a couple of months early, we will be, we will be fully staffed.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions just on things that are, um, on the year-to-date budget spent.
Sure.
There is, um, police capital outlay, not much money, thirty-three thousand dollars. Do you know what that's for?
Without seeing the line item, it's either what was left over from the cruisers because we, the money we appropriated for cruisers, after getting the money, we started some cost-saving measurement, measures and cutting, cutting out of them. That may also be, depending again, what, what line item it is, that may be what's left over in the, in the money we appropriated for the various studies of two-ten Lancaster Street and Twenty-Nine Church. That had a fair amount left in it.
Well, the, uh, the original transfer was three hundred ninety-three thousand.
That's the cruisers.
That's the cruisers. Okay. That's what I thought.
That's the.
And then there's another line item, police station court prior. And that has seventy-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight in it.
That is the two-ten money. That was appropriated for the studies of two-ten. And then, uh, with the permission of the comptroller and I think Copman and Page, we used money for that for the study on Twenty-Nine Church rather than re-appropriating.
But you still have seventy-five left.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't know whether that'll be spent or the, that'll be, that'll be deadlined into free cash. I don't know.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilor Mashin?
Go right back at you. Same question to the fire department regarding the opiate crisis. How, what's happening with your staff, dealing with the opiate crisis, substance abuse, mental health issues?
From what, from what perspective? I mean, that's, that, that, like the fire chief said, that is a significant portion of our calls now. You know, we go to some that they don't go to. And, um, yeah, it's a significant portion of our calls. Sometimes it's three to six a day. And, um, I mean, I, again, council, what perspective? Because we just go to our calls. I mean, I, I just formed the task force inside the police department, the opioid task force. We're looking at getting that, hopefully that half of, that, that part-time counselor. I'm aiming towards a knock and talk program, modeling on the Arlington PD program. I've got two patrolmen and a civilian in the task force now to, to, to try and coordinate all this, reach out to other social service agencies because, you know, this whole opiate thing is a multi-pronged attack. You can't just do it one way. But yeah, my guys go and, you know, they, they carry Narcan and, and I actually just, um, ordered two doses of Narcan for each one of my officers because of the fentanyl and carfentanil. Uh, that's the recommendation from the state. Medical people is that, that police officers now carry two doses for themselves. So we just did that. You know, you know what? We do our job.
Was the training coming? And wasn't there a little bit of resistance at one point? It may not have been in Lemonster, but resistance of police officers would be administering the Narcan?
There, there was resistance on the Lemonster Police Department. There was resistance. And it took, uh, I think a four to six-month negotiation with them and an explanation as to, as to what the whole thing was. I can tell you the day it got issued, we did a save that night. So.
Yeah.
I mean, it's working. I mean, I don't, again, you know, I had a conversation with a retired chief from Falmouth this morning. And, um, police officers do things we never thought we would do. And we get given things from governmental agencies and from society and from the public that we were never thought we were going to do. We are essentially, and, and people hear this from me a lot, police, we are essentially still cuff them and stuff them. That's what we do. And, you know, the, the added burdens of dealing with mental health and dealing with opioid addiction, uh, you know, overdoses. Even sometimes we're marriage counselors. And, but that's what we do and that's what, um, the public wants us to do. So we train to do it and we do it.
What is the status of our school resource officer or officers?
I have two school resource officers. I have one at the high school. I have one splitting between two middle schools. At one time, a couple of years ago, we had four. Okay? Two in the high schools and one in each middle school. It's my philosophy that that's overkill. It's great if you gave me, or the mayor gave me sixty-four or sixty-six guys. Okay? That would be great, but that's overkill at this point. When I am fully staffed at sixty, one of those officers at this, you know, and this changes depending on conversations with the mayor and the union. Like, I, I bring the union in on any manpower decisions I make so that, so that we're on the same page as to where they think the manpower should go to. The plan right now is when we hit sixty is to, to, to double the traffic unit from one guy to two. Because the number one complaint you people get and one of the number one complaints the city hall gets is traffic. So traffic's a nightmare in the city, as we all know. So my plan is to put a second traffic guy, um, on a swing shift, eleven hundred hours to nineteen hundred hours to offset the other guy that's oh-six-thirty to, to fourteen-thirty hours. Even though I think I told you last time I was down there, that position is vacant right now because I don't have the manpower to fill it. The other person, my preference right now is another SRO. And that would be at the high school, but that person would probably have a dual role as a backup to the middle schools too. Middle schools generate a fair amount of calls.
Right.
They do.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilor Corvus?
Yeah, just a, um, I'm not going to be quiet anymore. Just a, just a.
Is that a warning?
Just a couple of things. Um, are you still shouldering the financial burden for two-ten Lancaster Street?
Yeah.
Also, all the light gas building and grounds, all those expenses, is it part of two-ten?
Yes.
Still? Okay. Do you have any idea when you're going to be relieved of that burden? Because it sounds like we're not going to use that building.
So my understanding is, and I, I don't know if I'm speaking out of school, my understanding is that, that building, um, may be up for sale soon. So I have contingency plans for bringing my detectives back. We've actually begin, begun converting a space for them. And we have converted, um, the old evidence room back into an evidence room again. The mayor told me, you know, straight out not to rush, but it, that, my understanding is that's the long-term goal for that building. I'm, I'm probably going to get yelled at tomorrow. Right?
Right.
That's my understanding that that's the, that's the long-term goal for that building.
How, how many people do you have over there?
Um, four, six, seven. I have seven currently.
Okay.
That, that, that number is actually one higher than it should be because I've, I've made changes in the, in the size of the detective bureau too.
Also, the, the educational differential, as most people know, that's the Quinn bill. And we still have people that are grandfathered into that. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars this year. When, when are we going to be relieved of that burden? We, the number of people that are grandfathered into that must be dwindling pretty fast.
It dwindles every year. It dwindled, um, off the top of my head, um, we lost three or four in this fiscal year already. So it's going down. But there are some fairly young guys, you know, relatively speaking. I think, again, I'm talking off the top of my head, I want to say the youngest guy that got his bachelor's degree and was grandfathered just before that change is thirty-three years old. So it's, he can say thirty-two more years.
Right.
He can say at least sixty-five. So that's not going to be a, a zero line item, you know, for a long time. But it's dropping dramatically. And the ones we lost in FY seventeen were master's degrees. So.
Cause I think when I first got on the council, I mean, this thing was well, well over a half a million, maybe three, three.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's dropping every year.
Significantly.
It's dropping, but we've kind of, you know, again, I, I'm not so sure this is going to be a hundred percent accurate, but we've kind of, I think, leveled off for the next couple of years on retirements. I have one coming up in July. I have two that say they may retire at the end of this year. And then I've got one that's committed to next year. But, you know, the oldest member of the police department, I think, is fifty-eight now, which is really unheard of because there's not a guy that's in his sixties on the police department. So we have a young police department. So it'll get there.
I'm all set. All set. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to grab the public comment list.
Nice job, Chief.
Thanks.
What's a good day to connect?
Half a week.
What's that? Thursday, a good day to connect.
Yeah, I'm not here Friday, so.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. I think I'm pretty free Thursday.
Okay. Mid-morning?
I like ten.
Okay.
We'll see. Yeah. Thank you. I have to get up at three-thirty.
So we.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
All right. We have, um, we have four people signed up for public comment. And, um, the first one is Taylor Landry. If you'll take the podium, identify yourself and your address and then you can address the council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for staying this late. I didn't think that we were going to be here this long. I would have testified tomorrow, uh, but I, we're voting on marijuana, so I don't know how long that's going to take. So. Hello, my name is Taylor Landry, Seventy Gordon Street. Thank you to the president and the rest of the city council members for allowing me to testify tonight. Having grown up in Lemonster, a product of the Lemonster Public Schools, a daughter of two Lemonster Public School teachers. of two Lamonster Public School teachers, and a citizen who hopes to have a home here someday, I have come before you tonight to express my concern. I'm sure you all have been following the school department budget crisis closely, as it truly is a crisis. I don't need to get into detail of how underfunded our school department has been, and for as long as it has been. I'm here to urge you to think outside the box and make some moves that may not be the easiest or the most comfortable. This crisis that we are currently in is not at one person, one committee, or one entity's account, so I do not stand here and blame anyone, but change can be in your hands. Not too long ago, the school committee voted on a budget that was a little better than the budget the mayor recently submitted, with nearly a hundred proposed cuts in staff and even more within other entities. To my knowledge, there are two options here for you to take. One, you can take the budget that was handed to you from the school committee chair and reject it. I know this may be an uncomfortable, uncomfortable move and put you in a tenuous position. I've heard this was something that was suggested in the past, and I urge you to implement it this time around. It is my understanding that this would put you in a position of having to run on a month-to-month budget. It may not be easy, but it is what the students of this city deserve. The second option, the only other option I know of, would be to pass the budget as it stands and continue down this road where no light shines as far as education goes. If the latter is the option you decide, I worry for the future. I worry for the young adults my age who are looking for places to buy a home, have a family, and send their children to school. Our education department used to be a force to be reckoned with, and if the underfunding persists, that will not be true for years to come. You, as city council, and every other elected official, will spend much time attempting to dig out of the grave that we are currently continuing to dig into. Already, our enrollment rates are down, and if this continues, our population will begin to decline. That can lead to severe changes such as redistricting. Lamonster is currently so lucky to have a state representative all to its own. As our state rep's legislative aide, I have seen firsthand how difficult it truly is to fight for gains for your community, nevertheless, if those gains had to be shared between zip codes. If it ever gets to that point, you're going to need a bigger shovel to get out of that grave. We were on the uptick, a gateway city who is slowly but surely attempting its hand out of gateway city status. We have a future as a city. I hope to have a future with this city. I dream of having children who have a future with this city, so please, forget about the now, and I urge you to dream with me and take action for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Um, the next, um, signed up speaker is Heather Mazafaro.
My name is Heather Mazafaro, Number Road, and very tricky to do this at the end, so we all had to sit here all night long. Just kidding. Thank you, counselors. I stand before you tonight as a parent, I'm going to save the fun stuff for tomorrow night. All of us in this room are the product of a school system. I cannot attest to whether it was a good system or a bad system at that time for you, but nevertheless, we have all had the luxury of an education. The fight for funding for education is not one that is new, it is puzzling why it always seems to be such a battle, ironically, among educated people. But here we are in Lamonster, desperate to hold it together. I know that the charter states that you do not have the ability to add to the budget, and I appreciate that year after year, you are not given much choice in what options you have, and the time restraints that come with it, and you do the best that you can. However, we have gotten here, and we are here, and we are in crisis. As a parent, I've had my seventh grader ask about JV sports, he still has a couple of years to even get there, but he's concerned about it because that's what they're talking about at school. And I tell him that I'm going to do everything that I can to be a voice for him, to which he says every time I come home, and he'll probably do it again tonight, are there going to be JV sports next year? Can I tell all my friends? So I stand here before you and I ask this question. When does the almighty OPEB get fully funded? Last week, I think it was, I read in the paper, twenty-twenty-three, and then I heard John Richard say tonight, twenty-twenty-one, and my son graduates in twenty-twenty-two. So, only after millions every year going to OPEB will have extra money for education? How about this be pursued a little less aggressively, so that we can invest in a school district? Is it our goal to be the first to fully fund OPEB in the state for any specific person or agenda, because it seems we are doing so at the expense of education and on the backs of the current students of Lamonster? There is already enough on the backs of the students of Lamonster, thank you.
Um, the next scheduled speaker is Michael Stassen.
So I'm Michael Stassen, eight-ninety-three Main Street, here in Lamonster. Um, it's awfully late and I have way too many things to say, so I'm just going to say a couple of things. I teach math, so I'm about numbers. Um, I think we have to set some priorities, so I'll just point out a couple of things. I noticed that in fiscal year twelve, education was fifty-eight-point-nine percent of the city budget, that has gone down each year, the proposal for two thousand and eighteen has education down to fifty-five-point-two percent of the total city budget, a loss of three-point-seven percent. We're spending less on education and more on the other things. Uh, the mayor showed you tonight that, that what he's proposed is a three-point-one-six percent increase, I believe I have that number right, but that's not what he did across the board. If you look area by area, you'll see general government goes up three percent, public safety goes up three-point-nine percent, public works, three-point-eight, human services, four-point-eight, culture and recreation, six-point-four, miscellaneous, whatever the heck that is, goes up ten percent, education goes up one-point-eight percent, it's the smallest on the list, other than, uh, debt service, I think that's the only one that's less. So, there's a question of, uh, priorities. I also wanted to, uh, correct something about, that was said about the transportation costs. Uh, the school committee does know what the transportation costs are, we have signed a contract, it was for four-point-eight million roughly this year, the mayor knew that when he told you three-point-two a year ago. Um, the reason you don't have a school committee number is the school committee did not pass a budget last year. When he tells you they told him three-point-two, that's just not true. I sat in those meetings for the school committee last year. At the mayor's request, the finance committee gave a net school spending budget, the majority of the school's committee said that's not enough and voted against it, the mayor said you can't, and then they, some people proposed a different budget, but the mayor said they couldn't vote on that. He was wrong on that, but they never got to produce one, that's why you don't have a number there. The mayor made up the three-point-two, even though he knew it'd be four-point-eight. We're, to maintain, he kept saying aggressive increases in busing, to maintain the current services, exactly next year what we did this year, the contract is a little over five million. The savings they're talking about with the consultant, they've already met with that consultant, and they look, they've, they've identified about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in savings, which gets them back to the four-point-eight, which is why that's what they asked you for. I could go on and on, but it's really late and I'm sure we all want to go home, so I'll sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Stassen. Um, next speaker is Kathy Sargent.
They left.
Is there any other speaker that would like to be heard?
Gary Zimmerman, Lynn Haven Road, and I will try to be quick also, just a couple of points that came up tonight, um, with the mayor and some other things. Um, as far as the, the police department, he, he actually talked about how a, a house budget works and people have to, you know, have their budget at home. You know, if I'm going to build something, or I need a truck, or I'm going to go to a new house, I start saving, and I look back, for as long as we've talked about this police department, if we took two-hundred thousand or five-hundred thousand dollars out of free cash every year, it would already have a bank account ready to fund the whole thing. Um, so to think about another loan and taxes going up again, um, is kind of funny. Um, one of the other things I want to talk about was the audit, um, you know, all the numbers sounded so good, or all the things he said sounded good. Where I work, we do a reserve study, and we pay, um, quite a bit of money to have the reserve study done, we're financially sound where I work, but the key is to show the people in the community why we're financially sound. So if it sounds so good to have the audit, I don't understand why it doesn't have the audit, it's just going to make him look better. If everything that he says here is it's, we're of, you know, a model city for the, for the audit, then have him come in and then just write up a report saying you guys are doing everything great. Um, so at this point, that's all I have, it's just a couple, couple odds of observations for that, I'll have more to say next week, thanks.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? And, uh, anybody on the council have anything further? Then I'll adjourn the, um, subcommittee meeting of the finance committee, and we can all go home. Okay.[1756.13]